Okay, I will now call to order the April 26, 2012, meeting of the Emeryville Planning Commission. Do you have a roll call?
Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
Commissioner Coomerly.
Here.
Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Sherman.
Here.
Commissioner Steinberg has an excused absence this evening. Vice Chair Flores.
Here.
Chair Donaldson.
Here.
We have a quorum of six commissioners.
Rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. This is the time on the agenda for public comment for items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Hearing, I will move on to the minutes from the February 23 meeting. We did not have a March meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or motions?
To move, approve.
Second.
Objections? Well, without exception then, and with one absence.
Yeah.
It's Director's Report. Charlie.
Yes. Well, since you didn't meet in March, the council has met four times since your last meeting in February. They met on March 6th, March 20th, April 3rd, and April 17th. Just briefly what they did at each of those meetings. On March 6th, the council approved a $200,000 grant application to the US EPA for the East Shore State Park to help fund the design of the Powell Street frontage upland area, which we are going to be doing in cooperation with the park district. The council approved a resolution accepting a $748,000 Safe Roots to Schools grant from Caltrans, which will be used to improve pedestrian safety at the intersections of 43rd, 45th, and 47th Street with San Pablo Avenue. Yet another example of the city moving ahead with implementation before we have actually adopted our Ped Bike Plan, which hopefully you will do tonight. On March 20th, the council held a study session on the draft pedestrian bicycle plan, which again is before you tonight for, hopefully for approval. On the Emeryville Berkeley Oakland Transit, also known as EBOT study, the city council approved a resolution authorizing staff to apply to Caltrans for a $250,000 Urban Transit Planning Studies grant to explore ways to improve local transportation in the East Bay, central East Bay Green Corridor area, including West Oakland, Emeryville, and West Berkeley. The council approved the annual report on implementation of the general plan, which you had approved at your February meeting. They adopted the Sustainable Transportation Plan, and they adopted an Economic Development Strategy and Implementation Plan for the city, which was developed by the Economic Development and Housing Departments. And the Planning and Building Department will be instrumental in a number of the implementation measures for that strategy. On April 3rd, the council held a study session about developing a new city mission statement and decided to form a task force to explore that issue further. They also authorized the mayor to sign a letter to the state legislature requesting a change in existing legislation which, to allow local passengers to ride Amtrak buses between Emeryville and San Francisco, which as you may know is currently precluded by state law, and that is called for in the general plan. And they approved a tree removal permit for the Parkside Apartment Project, formerly known as Paper Mill, for the street trees along Powell Street with conditions requiring the applicant to pay a replacement value fee. And then at their last meeting on April 17th, they discussed the draft preferred scenario that ABAG and MTC have developed for the Sustainable Community Strategy under SB 375. They also discussed the draft Regional Housing Needs allocation that ABAG has released, and they will be finalizing their comments about those things at their next meeting on May 1st. And finally, on April 17th, and I'm sure of great interest to you all, is that they adopted new procedures for how they will go about making Planning Commission appointments. And I have put on the dais in front of each of you a copy of the staff report, the city council staff report on that matter, so you can refer to that. In summary, all applicants, including incumbents seeking reappointment, will need to fill out an application and be interviewed by the city council. This year, the application deadline will be May 21st, and depending on the number of applicants received, the council will either hold the interviews before the regular council meeting on June 5th, or they will pick a different date for a special meeting for those interviews. This year, this affects Commissioners Flores and Moss, assuming that you both wish to seek reappointment. Next year, it will be Commissioners Coomerly, Sherman, and Steinberg, and in 2014, it will be Commissioners Donaldson and Cardoza. And then, of course, we'll circle back to Commissioners Flores and Moss again and continuing on. They plan to make the appointments at the June 19th council meeting in time for the July Planning Commission meeting. So if you want to be reappointed, I suggest you get your applications in by May 21st. And they will, someone will notify you about when the interviews are going to be held. The Center of Community Life, which you will be hearing a presentation on in just a few minutes, the school district has announced a new series of seven workshops, seven community workshops, extending through December, to consider the schematic design for ECCL. There was one held last Thursday, April 19th, which unfortunately I think we all missed. But the next one will be on Saturday, May 12th, followed by Thursday, June 14th, and times and locations of those are to be determined. And finally, just wanted to let you know that last week I attended the annual National Planning Conference of the American Planning Association in Los Angeles, along with Associate Planner Diana Kena and Commissioner Moss. As always, there were lots of interesting tours and sessions. This one was particularly interesting to me because I grew up in Southern California, and a lot has changed since I left many years ago. And I also came to realize that I never actually really knew LA very well to begin with, so it was enlightening. There will be a full report in our April progress report, which you will be receiving in a couple of weeks. Unless you have any questions for me, that concludes my report. And then I would like to turn it over to the Assistant City Attorney, who has an announcement to make.
Okay, Assistant City Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Donaldson. So I'd like to share with the commission that after nine years here in Emeryville, I'll be leaving the service of the city and starting a new job with a firm in Oakland. And this, tonight, will be my last Planning Commission meeting with you. And I'd like to thank you for my years of service here, which have been a real pleasure and have really, it's really been an honor to be able to serve with such a dedicated and caring group of individuals such as yourself. I mean, part of what makes this job really interesting is the projects that happen, and they all come through you. And the fact that, you know, you've been faced with some challenges, and that I've been, you know, lucky enough to help guide you through those, has really helped me develop in my career. And I hope that I've been able to serve this body well. And I think it's really helped me advance to, you know, the next stage in my career. So, you know, while I'm looking forward to the next step in that career path, I certainly do it with a certain amount of regret as well, because this has been a great place to be for so long, and in part, serving with all of you as well. So, thank you.
Well, Michael, thank you so much for all of your service to the city, and you have always given us good, solid, steady, and clear advice, and I wish you all the best going forward.
If I can just, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, good luck. It's been a pleasure working with you.
I could just say a word on behalf of staff. I think I speak for the whole Planning and Building Department. You see Michael at the commission meetings, of course, and benefit from his advice here, but what you don't see is what goes on behind the scenes every day in the office. Michael reviews all the agendas and all the staff reports and all the resolutions and all the conditions of approval. And we have long and detailed discussions about lots of things, and I'm gonna miss Michael's advice in the future.
I'm gonna miss you, too.
Thank you.
What's that? Good news for you and sad news for us. We'll move on to the rest of the agenda here. Tonight on our agenda, we had one study session and two public hearings. The public hearing on the Wells Fargo Bank project is being postponed and continued to a later date. So we will begin with the study session on the Emeryville Center for Community Life.
Good evening, Chair Donaldson and Commission members. So this is a study session for the Emeryville Unified School District and City for Emeryville for the project known as Emeryville Center for Community Life. In terms of a bit of a background, for several years now, the city and the school district have been planning for a new multipurpose, multi-generational facility to serve educational, community services, arts and recreation. Several sites have been considered over the past few years, and the current site of the Emory Secondary School was selected. A master plan was developed on this 7.6 acre site, and the commission heard a study session on that in '09, May of '09. So this project will redevelop the Emory Secondary School site to accommodate about a little less than 150,000 square foot of multi-story, multi-use facility that will co-locate the elementary and secondary schools, that's K to 12 grades, and accommodate the city's adult and youth service programs. The campus will be built in two phases and will be operated jointly by the school district and the city. The facility will be used during day, evening, and weekends, with the center expected to operate daily from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM year-round, with the highest usage during the school year, which runs from September to June. In terms of phasing, in the Phase One, in the Phase One, all buildings on the current site are going to be demolished except for the fields and except for the existing gym and the pool. These will stay in Phase One. The completion of Phase One is expected in August 2015, and the total number of students at this point would be 780. And in Phase Two, it'll increase to about 1,120 students. In Phase Two, there'll be an addition of around 10,000, a little over 10,000 square foot of space, and I'll get into that in a little bit. This is the Phase One site plan, conceptual site plan. As you can see, most of the massing occurs along San Pablo Avenue. We have six buildings that surround the community commons. Along San Pablo, you have a community multipurpose room. Administrative services for both the school and the city are going to be here. And then you have the ninth to 12th grade schools located here, along with the community library, as well as something called the STEM, STEAM Center. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math Program. The K to 8 school classrooms will be located behind the commons, right here. In addition to that, you'll have a school multipurpose room. There'll be some onsite parking along 47th Street, and the existing gym and the pool are going to stay. The red lines that you see, it kind of shows the difference, the difference in the school activities and the public activities during the school, school time. So as you can see, the administrative services, the community commons, the community library, the community multipurpose room will be open to public during school hours. In Phase Two, the main additions are going to occur in this blue circle. This will be over the parking, and it will accommodate additional covered parking. In addition to that, there'll be a school gym, as well as a theater, and some additional classrooms. This gym, that is, the existing gym, which will be renovated, will now only be for public use. Again, the red lines show the difference in functions between the school and the public. So as you can see, this public gym is now open to the public during school hours. This shows the Phase One building massing. I'm not going to get too much into it, as the applicant will kind of describe this in greater detail. And this is the Phase Two building masses, and as you can see, this is the new addition, which includes parking, classrooms, theater, as well as the school gym. In terms of how the space is going to be used, there will be some dedicated space, which will be for exclusive school district, and some space which will be for city's community services. So for the school district, a portion of classrooms, primarily from grades K to 3, school offices and support areas, this will be dedicated primarily to school district. After school hours with the city, the shared space will be some classrooms, science and language labs, music rooms, multipurpose rooms, library, the kitchen and conference rooms, as well as the K through 8 play areas and hotcoats, sports fields, running track, and also the student social spaces at the grade and terrace levels. As far as the city services are concerned, again, the administrative and support areas will be the ones which should be exclusively for the city use, and upon mutual agreement during school hours, portions of the gym, the fitness and dance rooms, the community multipurpose rooms, and other spaces will also be shared by the school in mutual agreement. So these are the building elevations. At this time, we don't have clear design concepts in terms of materials, in terms of the actual design articulation, but this simply kind of tells you the massing that will occur. The top one shows the San Pablo Avenue, and the buildings along San Pablo are 30 feet, and they kind of go up as you go back, reaching a maximum height of 48 feet, and that would be the K through 8 classroom building. And this is the 47th Street elevation. This shows the building section as you're facing San Pablo Avenue, kind of gives you which buildings, the height of the various buildings is the K through 8 building, and that's the tallest building. And you have, these are the administrative support services. Here you have the public library, and this is the high school. In terms of how the circulation is going to work, there's, there are going to be three main public portals along San Pablo Avenue. So the ones, what you see in orange is public, and what you see in blue is school. So this, as far as the school is concerned, the high school students will enter through 47th Street, whereas K to 8 students will be entering along 53rd Street. And the blue, this is a covered parkway, a covered walkway that you see, and this kind of shows internal circulation among students and staff within the school. In terms of parking and drop-off, as I mentioned earlier, the parking, the onsite parking will be along 47th Street, which is right here. This will be the 9 through 12 drop-off only. There's some bicycle parking along the southern portion of 47th Street. And this kind of shows the drop-off for K to 8 along 53rd Street. And this is kind of a comparison between what is existing at the Anne Yates, and it kind of shows you that there's a longer drop-off area for K to 8. A roundabout down the road is also being proposed, and Fair and Pierce is currently looking at the more details of how this is going to work. This is the conceptual landscape plan. As you can see, you have the existing sports fields, which will be kind of reconfigured to create play areas for different grades. And at this level, it is very conceptual, and as the design goes to further development, we expect to see a lot more details. I'd like to show you the existing pictures of what existing landscape exists. This is San Pablo Avenue. As you can see, you have a row of trees along the curb line, as well as a row of smaller trees facing the building. And this is 47th Street. We do have a few mature trees. As you go down, you have a smaller trees all lining along the curb side. Sorry. This is 53rd Street. There are no street trees, but there are a few mature trees within the site. And there are some more mature trees along the middle of the existing school. A tree survey has not yet been done, but the applicant is planning to do that. They will be surveying all trees on the site, including street trees, also look at the health of the trees, and then depending on as the design develops, they are going to try and protect as many trees as possible. In terms of conformity to land use policies, in terms of use, this is designated public, and all the uses that are being proposed are allowed by right. In terms of flow area ratio, what is permitted is 1.2 by right, which can be increased to 1.6, given, provided, I mean, that 1.6 is the bonus FAR allowed on the site. What they are proposing is far smaller than what is allowed by right, both in Phase One and Phase Two. As you can see, .3, 0.35, and .46 in Phase Two. Height, what is allowed is 30 feet, which can be increased to 50, 55 feet with bonus. The proposed height varies from 30 feet to 40 feet. So a conditional use permit for height would be required for this project. In terms of parking, as the proposal co-locates K to 12 classes along with a number of community services, the section that is more relevant and more applicable is what is under parking requirements for unspecified users. Fair and Pierce have conducted a parking analysis, which was attached to your staff report, that calculates peak parking demand to be 118 parking, parking spaces. What is being proposed is 34 onsite in Phase One and 55 in Phase Two. So parking variance will be required. Just as a reminder, we only consider onsite parking as being part of the required parking. Street parking is not considered to fulfill the parking requirements of any proposal. The proposal does look at, and the Fair and Pierce have been looking at, reconfiguration of parking, street parking spaces on 47th Street, and looking at permit parking along that street that would increase the parking to 90 spaces on 47th Street, with a total of 124 spaces in Phase One and 145 spaces in Phase Two. And if street parking is calculated, counted, street parking available on 53rd Street and San Pablo Avenue is included, then the total increases to 189 in Phase One and 219 in Phase Two. An environmental review, CQ analysis, will be required for this project. The school district is the lead agency for CQ. I understand that they are currently doing an initial study mitigated negative declaration. And this mitigated negative declaration will need to be approved by the commission as a responsible agency prior to the approval of the project. So the way it would work is that the school district would have to first certify the MND as it's the lead agency, and then after that, it will come to the commission for CQ compliance, as well as the project approvals. The site is well over 10,000 square feet, so the stormwater requirements will be applicable, and at the time of formal approval or decision, a stormwater plan would be required for the project. In terms of permits that are needed for this project, it will be a conditional use permit for height or parking variance, and design review for new construction, as well as potentially tree removal permit if, after the tree survey is done, it is, it's felt that certain trees need to be removed. In terms of community outreach, as Charlie mentioned earlier, a series of meetings have taken place. Eight in all workshops have taken place, and another seven are being scheduled. And these are the images of the last week's workshop. The community was shown a variety of pictures of projects of similar scale, and the top five images were the ones which were seen as most desirable, whereas the bottom five were seen as the least desirable. The project was reviewed by the internal DCC committee, and there were certain concerns that were raised. One was regarding the use of and sharing of common spaces between high school and elementary school students. Pedestrian safety issues for street crossing on San Pablo also was thought that needed to be further analyzed by Fair and Pierce. There was concerns regarding availability of adequate parking. There was a concern for the need for more bicycle parking on 53rd Street. Greater detail was needed for the treatment of Temskeal Creek, which I believe the applicant is working on. And there was a concern that the community commons would be off limits to students during school hours, as this may not be possible or even desirable to enforce. In terms of the issues that the commission needs to consider today and give direction both to staff and the applicant, is regarding the parking variance. The second is the height bonus. As I've mentioned, the height does go beyond the 30 foot allowed by right to a maximum of 48 feet. And this means that the project needs to provide two public benefits for the increased height from 30 to 48 feet. And staff has identified public open space and public right-of-way improvements to qualify for this bonus height. We are requesting that the commission give us direction as whether this is sufficient or whether the features of the project should be counted towards bonus height. Just as a reminder, our regulations also allow the commission to determine that one public benefit is sufficiently significant and substantially beyond normal requirements so as to warrant the granting of all or part of the full bonus. The next is the pedestrian experience. There was a staff concern regarding the experience along San Pablo Avenue, which at this point cannot be assessed, as the buildings have not been fully designed. So we request that the commission give direction regarding how to ensure a pleasant experience, a pleasant pedestrian experience can be done on San Pablo. An amphitheater is being proposed. I'm requesting that the commission give direction regarding whether programming of the space at the amphitheater should be identified at the entitlement stage to ensure that space is designed for electrical and sound needs. There was a concern that an amphitheater in another city was designed without taking these electrical and sound needs into consideration, and once it was built, it was really difficult to use that space in the most optimum manner. The last thing that we need your direction on is regarding the community commons, and whether it is appropriate to keep the community commons off limits to students during school hours. So our recommendation is that you provide us common direction regarding the issues that I just identified, and that concludes my presentation. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer. And before you do that, I'd like to point your attention to this letter that we received today. It is an open letter to the school district and to the Emeryville community, and it raises certain concerns about the project. The applicant is here, the architect team is here, as well as a representative from the school district, Roy Miller, as well as Milanda Chen, our community services director, is also present.
Are there any questions for Maru?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
One quick one. The parking structure, AC Transit has, do you know how high that is by any chance?
AC Transit?
Yeah, there's a...
47th and Doyle.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I see a nodding head over there. Do you know the height of the parking structure?
Or roughly.
I don't think I've ever seen actual documents for it, so I don't know the exact height. I know it's about three and a half levels of parking.
That's close enough.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm a little confused about the city services that are going to be included in this facility. Are they services that are currently being offered by the city and other locations, or are these new services?
Some are being offered currently. There'll be new services, including a new library. And it is, it is anticipated that the community services will be adding more programming to this facility. Milanda perhaps can speak more to this?
Good evening. Currently, we, the community services department is separated into several different facilities, with the interim, the first interim recreation center on 43rd and San Pablo, that's been removed, and we're going to get another interim facility. That's been removed and we're be, we're going to get another interim facility that will house our after-school program, our summer day camps, we'll have our Kinder Buddies program, which is a mommy and me type of program for preschoolers. Well, it'll be an overflow for the senior programs because we're busting at the seams at the senior center. Everything that's located in that facility will all move to the Center of Community Life and that, that lot is zoned for senior housing, I believe, so it will revert to that. Once we move to the Center of Community Life, the trailers will be taken down and that lot will be available.
Excuse me, the senior center will dis, current senior center will disappear?
No, the interim recreation center.
Oh, okay.
And we will all move to the Center of Community Life. The senior center will stay where it is, but because we're busting at the seams, they'll have supplementary activities at the Center of Community Life.
Melinda, I have one question. The, on, in the staff report, there's kind of a list of city services that will be provided, but I didn't see, I was a little confused as to on the site plan where, like exactly where those would be provided. So there's, there are things like the Family Resource Center slash Wellness Center, Dental Clinic, Teen Center, Arts and Music Studios, Cafe, Senior Lounge.
Okay, we can show you in a picture. I can point to it. Okay, see where it's ESD Admin and CS Admin? Those are on the top floors. On the middle floors and bottom floors will be the Dental Clinic, the Health Clinic. Let's see, some of the other activities, we'll have arts and crafts, we'll have dance. All of those activities will be up by where the gym is. The community multipurpose room will be for the public, will have banquets and wedding receptions and exercise classes and special events that will be separate from the, the youth multipurpose rooms that be used for school lunches. Did you, other activities, what other?
Um, I think that, well, the cafe and the senior lounge.
Okay, yeah, the cafe and the senior lounge will, I believe are adjacent to the library right now.
If you, if you look at your plans that you have on page seven and page eight, page nine, basically page seven and page eight. They kind of give you the program blocks.
Yeah, so the senior lounge will be on the left side, under, underneath the USD Admin on the ground floor. That will be the game room, the teen center, senior lounge, and then you'll have the Dental Clinic on the ground floor and the Wellness Center will be underneath the CS Admin.
So with the CS Admin, I'll be moving away from the senior center as well as from the interim?
No, just the admin, which is Kevin Laven, myself. Myself is the director, our office assistant. Cindy Montero, the Youth and Adult Services Manager, but all of the adult services staff will stay at the senior center.
Any other questions for staff?
Is this community multipurpose structure shared by the school or is that just for...
It's primarily, it's primarily for the city. It will be shared as agreed upon, but the city had, that is part of the community facility, so that will be open during the daytime during school hours and it'll be run by the city.
And that would be for...
Banquets, wedding receptions, dances, exercise classes, anything that the community would want to participate in. That would be, we would program recreation programs out of that facility. Similar to what happens at the senior center multipurpose room, if you've been to that facility, it's, it could be another satellite site for senior activities. Like I said, we're, we're running out of room at the senior center, so we'll be planning lots of activities for seniors at the site, but will not be closing the senior center.
I had a couple of questions for Maru. Are you, does staff feel that the, the loading, parking, it's, which is all on Forty-seventh, I believe, is adequate for the entire site?
We need to see a more detailed traffic report. Right now, we've been getting only parking surveys, and as a part of the CQ review, a full traffic analysis would be done. So there is some concern, but we are hoping that the traffic report should be able to address that.
Okay.
Is it the traffic that triggered the mitigated negative declaration?
Typically, traffic in our urban areas is what triggers the mitigated negative declaration, but this is a large enough project where there are other issues regarding air quality, also aesthetics. So those are, basically, we look at traffic, air quality, and aesthetics are the three major components in a CQ document for our, our city.
So it was really the size of the project that triggered it?
Yes.
Is there any, and maybe, is the applicant going to come up?
Yes, yes, they have a presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, then applicant would like to step up and...
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Steve Kelly and I'm very pleased to be before you tonight to present to you some more information beyond what the staff just presented to you, hopefully give you a little better understanding of the conceptual design. And to represent the Nexus Partners, the architectural team who's been selected to design the ECCL project. I'd like to take a few minutes and just walk through, frankly, the presentation I have for you tonight is, is inclusive of all of the images that you have in your packet. So because staff has gone through many of them, you'll see some that are duplicate, but I will try to emphasize the, the points that are unique and perhaps give you more depth on items that weren't mentioned in the staff report. I'd just like to point out, though, that the, the work to date is, as was represented by the title, its conceptual design is not yet at schematic design level. We're actually just beginning that process now, so effectively about two weeks ago, we are entering the phase where the architecture really begins, although the community engagement and a lot of work has gone into it, obviously, for decades and years before, thanks to many who've preceded us. I'm going to just focus on this image for one second and just point out a couple of things that wasn't, that weren't covered by staff. There was a mention of all of the, of the fields staying as part of Phase One. We envision the entire site, the ESS site, being basically cleared with the exception of what's outlined in the red dash lines, which is the existing gymnasium, High Bay space, and possibly the pool equipment room, which runs the Forty-seventh Street edge, and the pool deck itself. The fields will probably, will be replaced, as you can tell from the reconfiguration of the fields in the, in the conceptual design. So again, staff did give you an overview of the, the site organization. The buildings, in fact, do concentrate along Forty-seventh and, and San Pablo, much as they do in the configuration today. And there's a good reason for that. That's because the edges to the top of this slide, which is west-facing, and to the right, which is north-facing, are residential communities, Emery Bay Village to the top and Oakland Neighbors on the, on the right. And so the, the, the notion of not intensifying uses along those edges was, was core to the way we approached citing the buildings on the site. Going multi-story allows us to provide more space at ground level, in fact, than if you, if you compare a figure ground to what is there now, there's actually more landscape space, even though the site is accommodating more program space. The community commons is the pinwheel around which the five buildings along San Pablo, Forty-seventh and Fifty-third Streets spin. And as was described, the, the building that's along the, I'm going to use the mouse here, along the edge of San Pablo is a two-story structure, which accommodates on the top floor district offices, admin offices, some conferencing. But below is, is really community services. So that includes the Family Resource Center, Wellness Center, Health and Dental Clinics, Teen Center, things like that. And the reason it's there is to provide convenient public access to all users who are coming from the community to use this facility. To the corner at Fifty-third, Forty-seventh, I'm sorry, in San Pablo is another two-story structure. It's the, again, high school classroom instruction space, the STEAM Center, which some people get confused with a spa or something like that. It's in fact an instructional space. I should mention that the users and staff are working at this moment to really define really what that means from an operational and programmatic and pedagogical perspective. So the interior organization that will emerge later on in the schematic design. The high school entrance actually will occur off of Forty-seventh Street, adjacent to what we are indicating as drop-off space. Community access will occur through the main portal on San Pablo. There's a secondary portal on San Pablo, adjacent to the community multipurpose space, which is a single-story structure, although it can have a higher bay, if you will. We'll, we'll be looking at that. The reason that there's a gap through the project, or the massing is shown here, is that this is the alignment of the box culvert, which Tempskyle Creek occupies, and that box culvert transects San Pablo right about this location, and then cuts through portion of the play space and fields and then runs along Fifty-third Street, right along the edge. Backing up one second. The K8 instructional space building is, is accessed off of Fifty-third Street with drop-off all along the edge of Fifty-third. This is a three-story structure. Again, it's, I believe, 48 feet in height. And adjacent to that is the school multipurpose space. So inside of K8 space will be, as, as parents and visitors arrive and drop their kids off, administrative offices will be on the ground floor. And then we'll walk through, I'll walk through later how the program stacks up through the three stories. The school multi-use space is a 6,000-square-foot footprint that can be divisible into two smaller halves, if you will, one for the K8 program, the other for the high school program. So this space serves many purposes, as indicated by the name. It's, it will serve lunches, two cycles per school day. It will also, in Phase One, serve as performance space for the performing arts. It will, on rainy days, serve as indoor additional PE space, as well as other school events. Connecting all this stuff together at the second level, which is sort of represented by this band here, as well as this bridge, and is a student circulation terrace. So while the community commons is primarily occupied by the public, and students arrive at both sides and don't necessarily need to cross into this commons, the students do circulate through their day once they're on campus at the second level, so there's not, they're not coming into direct contact with members of the community. There's physical separation in terms of level change. I will just, at this point, maybe mention something having to do with the access. The boundary line, which is represented here by this red dash line, is a suggested boundary line that indicates where school students during school days reside, including staff parking. But it doesn't necessarily mean that students can't, under supervision or with escort from their teachers, have classes out in the, in the commons on the amphitheater. So I wouldn't necessarily say that students can't use the community commons. It is something that is, that the design will accommodate, and it becomes an operational choice as to whether or not that's an acceptable solution. There will be physical, uh, boundary lines provided at each of the portals. There'll be, we envision attractive gates that will be oper, that can be operated and closed after, after business hours, if you will, which I believe are seven in the morning till nine at night. Again, they can be opened for special events, depending on how the facility owners would like to operate it and under the purview of, of the neighborhood agreements that I assume will be in place. Just continuing on with, sorry, the Phase One diagram. The gymnasium in Phase One is an existing structure. We will, we will expend dollars to seismically upgrade it. We will expend dollars to improve it from an interior perspective and will be adding some program to it, but the, the High Bay structural shell of that space will remain, and there's economies that go along with that. So Phase Two, as was mentioned by the staff report, infills the, the surface parking lot as well as two hardcore lots and provides additional instructional space, a teaching theater, and a new school gymnasium, in which case, at which point, the, the gymnasium to the west, which was dedicated to, or at least shared between community and, and school in Phase One, becomes dedicated to community use. And the high school, or sorry, the school then has a dedicated gymnasium. For the community, access to the, the recreational programs offered at the gym complex will occur along this edge and feed into a lobby to be designed that serve into family changing rooms, community locker rooms, dance studios, and fitness centers. So there's a series in your packet of three blocking, we call them blocking stacking diagrams, and this helps you give, get a sort of an early impression of how the various program blocks that are detailed in, in your packet in terms of a space program are laid out and organized inside each of these buildings. So again, the community multipurpose space is primarily a large-volume environment. There'll be restrooms, support spaces, probably food support in terms of banquet support and things like that. Along the San Pablo frontage, a Wellness Center, Dental Clinic, and Senior Teen Lounge and, and a bunch of other things that relate more to the community, the community. It will open both onto the, the commons itself, but also be accessible from San Pablo. We envision the sidewalk and landscaping along San Pablo, although it's not defined yet, to be more generous than, than the condition that currently exists, which I believe is 12 feet from curb to building. We're seeking, I believe this represents at least a 15-foot setback, and of course at the corner, we may be looking at a greater setback. In the K8 building, we envision first grade and kindergarten classrooms to be on the first floor, adjacent to their age-appropriate play spaces. Again, drop-off and K8 access to the, the school is through this plaza. And again, there may be some gates and fences and things like that attractive that can be used and operated in ways to restrict access to the commons from this point, or perhaps to open it on weekends and evenings when there might be an art festival or something like that, that would like to occupy a landscape that's more than just the commons itself. The multipurpose space, the school library, the school and community library, this is an interesting program, and again, it's one of these program pieces, it's being, that's going through some more specific programming at this point. The idea here is that the community will have access to the library from this point. So even if the commons is closed, depending on the operating hours of the, of the library, one could gain access to the library through the Welcome Center, the Cafe, and into the front, if you will, the community living room portion of the library. The school and, the school portion of the library dedicated to children's reading spaces, children's reading materials, and that kind of thing will be adjacent to school programs and not be necessarily available for public access through internal planning. The second floor, stacking up, you see there's administrative offices for the district and the city. The second and third grade loop classrooms occur here. There's a science program that's very much a part of that K8 curriculum. And associated with that science program would be outdoor instructional gardens in, in the landscape, adjacent to this building, so that kids and teachers can go out and experience learning through gardens and landscapes. The student terrace, again, is the piece that connects K8 to the STEM Center and to the high school classrooms. The multipurpose space is a multi, is two-story space. The multipurpose space is a multi, is two-story space, a high-volume space, high enough that one could play volleyball perhaps inside, perform dramatic performances, musical performances, and things like that. There would be a covered connector in Phase One from this point across to the student lockers and into the gymnasium complex. And at this point, would very likely be a physical boundary that keeps the, the public from accessing the sports fields and play areas during school hours. The third floor, really, in Phase One, only applies to this structure. And this structure is, while it is the tallest structure, it is set back from Fifty-third Street by about, I think it's about seventy-five feet, maybe eighty feet, and therefore not on the street edge. So the mass, the height of that, even though it is higher than thirty feet, is brought in board to reduce its impact on the street. And that's really the only change on the third floor. Again, six and eight classrooms. The, the representation here, again, is very conceptual. We're not necessarily at a point where we can tell you what the materials are or even the fenestration patterns. We're working with the community and would love your input if you are ready to give it to us on what you think is appropriate. But that's what we'll be heading into in this next phase of work. Again, the entry for the community is primarily here. Library, café spilling out onto a plaza, high school access on this side, elementary school access on this side, sports fields. We are showing a, a potential transit stop here, although we have no agreements in place with any transit agency to provide a stop at this point. The only reason it's being shown here is a suggestion that it might be something that's beneficial to the project. If you'd like us to move forward with that, we'd be happy to. It's possible that one could have a conversation with the Emery Go-Round and, and look at, see whether or not it made any sense to have a stop here, or whether AC Transit could move their stops, which are actually occurring just to the south and just to the north of the site. The site is well-serviced with transit stops, but there are streets to cross from the existing transit stops. So the question would be whether or not it'd be safer to provide a stop at the, the center itself. I'm sorry. Okay, just spinning around, you start to see where 912 drop-off is. We imagine this was where service loading will occur. Service loading will be adjacent to what likely will be a kitchen, which will then feed into the food service program in the multipurpose space. Gymnasium complex access by community from Forty-seventh Street. The, sorry, I'm, Phase Two, again, occupies this location. It does provide an additional, I believe it's a total of fifty-five spaces under structure with two stories above it. So the, the ultimate height of this massing will be commensurate with the K-8 program. And again, it seems well within the existing context to have some additional height along Forty-seventh Street at that point. I'd like to just point out, though, that the, the community commons is being designed to provide many modes of, of use. So one could imagine that, it certainly can be used in an amphitheater mode in one aspect where one could either stage community dramatic or musical performances. One of the ideas around that is, in having a stage at this point, would be that the community multipurpose space, in fact, serves as a bit of a backstage to that, and one can create a zone, if you will, to, to stage events at this point here, using this as some support space. It's also just, the, the idea is that this, when it's not being used for large performance events, that it's an attractive, pleasant, comfortable space. And we're trying to develop the massing solutions around this, the commons to be comfortable in scale, to feel safe, almost village-like, and to provide visibility and control by, per se, by providing visibility or providing control, which can provide additional safety and monitoring. So again, one of the reasons for having the administrative functions along this point and staffing functions along this point is really as the gatekeeper, if you will, kind of the lifeguard of this space. Staff did present you some of these drawings. There are five of these. They're a little hard to sort of go through in any great detail, but the, the point here is that you can see from the San Pablo elevation side, the prevailing massing of buildings to the south, of residential buildings to the north, and the, the relative scale of the project, broken down into multiple buildings on the site itself. This series of photographs represents what's on the site itself currently. So this is on the corner right here, and this represents the corner right here, and this is the existing ESS project site. The images above you represent what's opposite this elevation on the east side of San Pablo. Fifty-third Street, really the same thing. You're now looking at what really is an open sports playfield along this edge. There's a large bank of mature redwood trees between Emery Bay Village and the project site. This is San Pablo right here. This is the three-story K-8 building. And you're seeing beyond the site some of the AC Transit structure buildings. This is the gymnasium right here. And then on Forty-seventh Street, the same thing. In Phase One, this is surface parking. In Phase Two, this becomes, this represents the profile and the height of the massing for the Phase Two theater and classroom and new gym project. The sections, I think staff presented this to you, so I'm just going to skip through Site circulation is in general represented, the, the red dashed lines represent what we, during school day, would imagine would be more public paths of circulation. The blue represents paths of circulation at, at ground level, more or less, the student and staff, school district staff circulation. Having said that, though, we are actually working on, this is something that we're working more specifically on, so I wouldn't pay too much attention to the, necessarily the internal workings of some of this stuff, as we are in the process of refining some of these things with working groups right now. The eye-level renderings here are very schematic, and again, not trying to represent materiality, but more just to give you a sense of kind of the scale of the buildings and a sense of pattern, if you will, of void and, and building. This being the main portal, call it gateway, into the community commons from San Pablo. There's a bridge element that connects the STEM, STEAM Center, if you will, to the administrative space. The welcome center and the family resource center conveniently located on this corner here. And then the library café access, accessible to the public and running into the, into the space. Moving just into this, now we're inside the, the throat of the portal with the library to your left, the K-8 structure to the, more to the center, the sports fields are beyond. The amphitheater and stage area would be right about here, and this is the administrative block with the family resource center and, and community amenities at grade level here. There is a key to the whole organization of the project is to provide safe student circulation during school hours, and that's what is represented here with the student terrace. Should be pointed out, though, this, that this is not a school project entirely. It is a, the facility is really designed to be highly utilized and for a school program to be used by community after school hours, which include weekends and evenings and during the summer when school is not in session. The idea being that programs and partnerships will come in and provide adult ed programs, financial literacy programs, whatever it might be, to really provide a benefit to the community. The other benefit of this terrace is during non-school hours that this becomes a space that can be occupied by the public, both to access instructional space or programs, but during events that might be happening down below, whether it's a performance or a musical or an art festival or whatever it might be, it provides another level of observation for those who don't want to be on the dance floor. It's kind of a nice tool to provide an additional, if you will, programmable space to the commons itself. And it's a nice scaling device as well, and I think you'll be happy, as we start to develop this, what the architectural language of this could be. Looking from the, really kind of from the multi, community multipurpose building with sort of standing above what probably is the stage area itself, looking back toward the library into your right, the K-8 program and the student terrace, the admin program and the community programs below. We aren't married at all to this configuration. We are suggesting that the, the landscape has some slope to it. We will look into groundwater issues if we need to. We can provide slope, working upward from the datum that makes most sense in terms of groundwater. Using Birmingham, I don't necessarily think we need to have so many walls. We can throw, the idea being that you can put blankets and things like that on the lawn and just provide really comfortable seating and tools for people to use for either performances and just casual, you know, use of the space. This comparative is really, was helpful to some of the user groups to understand the space that's available currently for K-8 programs at Annie Yates', which is about 32,000 square feet of, of combined field space. This is synthetic turf, and this is a combination of natural turf and hardscape, about 32,000 square feet of space for the current K-8 program at Annie Yates'. And then the new facility will provide that and more. The green, the light green represents 42,000 square feet of mostly hardscape and softscape play spaces, in addition to 93,000 square feet of sports fields, in addition to internal programs that can support physical activities as well. And then just looking, more or less hovering above Emery Bay Village, looking back to the athletic and sports and play fields, the gym, the pool, dance and fitness studios, a, a running track, and, and really looking at ways, again, to be developed of occupying the landscape in a flexible way that, that honors and supports what the school needs and the community needs in terms of athletic programs, but also during non-school hours feels like a space that the community can occupy and program. There's a, there's a conversation about what kind of boundaries and barriers need to be provided between play spaces, between age groups, to provide the separation that is desired by the users, and we'll be working with users on that. But your thoughts on that would be welcome. And then you've seen this image as well. This is simply just representing our notion of drop-off along Fifty-third Street. And we do unders, we do recognize that Fifty-third Street, according to the general plan, is both a green street and a green way. Yet at the same time, we, we do have a functional need to provide safe drop-off for the K-8 students primarily. This diagram does point out, we are actually providing more for K-8 program than we have currently at Annie Yates', which is good. I mean, I think we're all trying to, we're trying to make the situation better than what the existing situation is. And the queuing is actually, we, we feel a safer queuing so cars can arrive this direction or from the west, turn at this point and come back, as opposed to what happens now, which you get, you often get double stacking of cars on Forty-first Street at Annie Yates'. Again, we want to work, we're, this doesn't represent, I think, the, the true notion of what the green street and green way approach is. I've added this image from the design guidelines or the general plan, which is the illustration of what's envisioned, really, at the Emery Bay Village edge, but effectively extended to our site as well, with a representation of the Temescal Creek in some form or fashion of landscape, a dry creek element. And then flora ratios, I don't think we need to go too much into this, but basically the amount of program that's being placed on the ESS site is a seven-and-a-half acre site roughly. Even in Phase Two, and I think this is interesting, is, is less than the existing FAR at Annie Yates', which is at .49. Site landscape. If you'd like to just ask me any questions after my presentation about specifics of this, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Fields, play space, really a network of open spaces that can be programmed and secured as needed to, to work in both school mode, community mode, or both at the same time. And then this image represents the survey of parking, both what is proposed on the site in Phase One. There's thirty-four spaces proposed, plus loading, drop-off and parking on Fifty-third Street, parking on both sides of Forty-seventh Street, and on the opposite side of, I'm sorry, San Pablo, and then on the opposite side of Forty-seventh Street. On these, on the ECCL side of Forty-seventh Street, we're actually reconfiguring the curb and taking some space out of our site to allow for parking to turn ninety degrees and increase the capacity of parking at the site boundary by about twenty-five to thirty cars. I don't have the exact count. The total represented by this map is 219 cars in Phase Two and 189 in cars in Phase One, as staff reported to you. And that's my presentation to you. If I missed anything, please, yes?
Question. Parking on-site for Phase Two, you have fifty-five. It's not shown on this diagram. Where is it?
Fifty-five spaces would be provided. See the blue boundary here?
Yeah.
Imagine that being extended effectively to this point and down and back. So-
That space that you've shown is recreation.
It is.
So the recreation will be reduced.
That is true. The hard, the hard courts at this point, and maybe something you asked us to come back and look at, the hard courts at this point do go away, but they're replaced by an additional gymnasium, which is part of Phase Two in this location right here.
You've shown that as K-8 recreation space, which will be-
Yes, if you look at that previous comparison, you're right. That, that number would come down. It would still be larger than what's there now at Annie Yates'. You're right.
Right. You could, go ahead. Could you go back to the previous slide, please?
Yeah.
Another one that had the comparative square footage and floor area ratio.
This one?
The Phase One that's being shown in that is including the high school space, the community space, and everything else. So what is the actual K-8 program space that's comparable to what's at Annie Yates'
The, I think the comparison here is, is, is taking what the current building area is at Annie Yates', which is 47,000-
Forty-seven, seven.
Seven, seventy-five on the acreage that exists, which is whatever, I can't, I'm not seeing it here. And then that's generating that FAR number. And we're doing the same for the program here. This is based on the space program for Phase One and Phase Two and the site area.
Actually, I was more trying to get at how much square footage is dedicated to the K-8 programming, because the, the Phase One is showing the gym and the community multipurpose room and the library and every, it's showing a lot of high school space. How much is K-8 space in Phase One?
Well, Phase One is three stories of, of this piece right here at the very le, right, this is all one story. So imagine this mapped out three times, the size it is now, that's all K-8 program. In addition to that, there is a portion of the, of this block right here, which is their multi-use space, about three-
That where the cafeteria is?
That's where the cafeteria would be. And then the K-8 have access to library program elements, which would be located right about here.
And with the gym, they would be using the gym?
They would also have access to the gym. That's true.
Do you have an actual breakdown of, of square footage at, at someplace between the, the K-8 versus the 912 uses?
I, it would be easy to generate. I don't have it- I don't have it prepared for you this evening. I'm not sure what the numbers are, in fact. The space program could easily be spun out to give you that information.
I'm also curious about how much of the parking, how does the parking break out between parking that is currently needed at Annie Yates' and parking that would be needed for this combined facility?
Again, all we have at this point is the staff, is the, is the Fair and Peers report, I believe is attached to your packet, which includes both a September memo and a, an addendum to that, which was upgraded, updated to reflect the proper overall square footage of Phase One and Phase Two.
Chair Donaldson?
Yeah.
Fair and Peers has not done that analysis, but they can easily do that, just for clarification.
Be useful. Are there other questions of the architects?
Could you just very quickly walk us through the flow between the K eight and the nine through 12 and the shared spaces?
Sure. What would be the best image to go to?
Probably the one that showed the traffic flow kind of thing.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so if you are a, if you are an elementary student, a K eight student, your day begins by being most likely dropped off at this point. You enter the K eight school program building at this point. This is the, the blue line represents the district, the administrative office for the K eight. That's, that would be a lobby, there'd be a parent sign-in location, there would be principal offices and some other support spaces. And then the, there's a stair at this point, which takes you up to, there's a gallery at this point at ground level, which we envision to be glazed. So it's a physical boundary, but a transparent circulation edge at the junction of the community commons. But there's also, in parallel to that at the level above, at the second level is the, is a terrace, and that is covered but open. So one, if you're, if you're a second, if you're a third grader, fourth grader, or a sixth through eighth grader, you're, you're moving upward through the building at this point via stair and elevator, and your circulation then is along this edge or into the floor of your choice, wherever your classrooms would be. And most likely, the flow here, if you're on a second floor, would be a U-shaped bar of circulation. So classrooms turning as a U with a core of either instructional space or science classroom in the center. And that's, that's your, call it your academy, if you will, of the K eight floor by floor. Now, if you're going from the K eight to have lunch, you have two choices. You can come down to ground level and move across this band, again, internal. You might be covered, but, but open at this point. We do want to provide some access for community during non-school hours through here, so we envision some kind of gate here, uncovered, but not probably internal. But you're then back into the building at this point, into the library program and feeding, you know, to this direction and feeding into your lunch space here. So if I'm a kindergartner, my movements are from here to lunch, to library, or to sports field, play areas, which are either here or here, I believe they're here. So that's a K eight, right? High school is really, my day starts here. Whether I'm dropped off here, whether I'm taking public transportation, I'm not driving, that's the, that's the current pattern of high school students currently. We wouldn't expect that to change. I'm arriving at this point, I'm, there is at the ground floor, a welcome center for the high school grade levels. There's a, there's some program space at this level, I think it's a dance, sorry, it's art classrooms. And then you're moving up into the second floor where the high school classrooms are, as well as the science labs, physics labs. Basically, your STEM center enrichment program occurs at this point. I move into the library in a similar way from this side, and so we would design a library to feed high school students in from one end, K eight in from the other end. And the level of mixing of the two is something that is controllable in some way. They either mix, they don't mix, we'll find out, or we allow for it to happen, or not to happen. That's usually our default, to not preclude anything from happening in planning, but to allow it to be used in multiple modes. As a high school student, then my, I do have access to sports fields and hard courts in this direction. It is the high school students most primarily that will use this field, and their movement would probably be in this direction. Access to the lunchroom, portion of the multi-use space, again, would be either at the second level and down a stair at this point and in, or at the ground level and in at this point. So that's kind of how that works.
So the K through eight primarily would use the multipurpose use for gym-type recess kind of space more than the, more than the gym?
I think we are, I'm not sure I can say with any specificity that's absolutely true. It could be true, but I think the, the users are weighing some of those options as we speak. They may, they certainly will use outdoor recreation space. There is, I think, very much the potential of using indoor play space as well. It's just a matter of operational staging, because there is dining furniture that would need to be folded and moved, and that certainly can be done, and there might be events where that space is not available every day, on an everyday basis. But I think your answer, the answer is, the idea is to provide that flexibility-
Okay.
-as much as possible.
And in the case that they do use, K through eight does use the gym space where the number five is, that would be a shared walking path for the K through eight and nine through 12?
It could be, or it could be separated. We could ask, we could make it so that the high school students do move in this direction, and we could make it so that the pathway to the gymnasium is a separate pathway. I don't think we want to create too many physical boundaries, but I think it could be designed in a way that that's the, that's the understood pathways.
What do other schools that use this model do for things like that? Do they try and separate the kids as much as possible?
Well, I know one that you may or may not have visited, and that's the Charter Lighthouse School, which is in Oakland. And it's a K-12 co-located school as well. And they're pretty careful about not creating too many boundaries between high school students. They do, like we're suggesting here, separate the physical instructional spaces to a great extent and don't necessarily mix the students and age groups by design, but they do provide opportunities for them to mix and learn from each other and all that. So it really becomes one of what the, what the district and community really want and for us to really respond to in the refinement plan that we move forward with.
But that is a charter school?
Yes.
Which has strong restrictions-
Yes.
-and requirements of parental involvement.
Yes.
So that not the same kind of operation that we have here.
Yes.
So when are we going to determine kind of what philosophy, what's kind of the governing philosophy as far as, you know, mixing of students? I mean, it seems to me like that's something you would have wanted to have established during the planning state or, you know, the site planning stage.
Well, I think the philosophy, the philosophy does exist right now. The district is very much in support of co-locating K eight and high school students. I think the, the direction to the design team is to make sure that those age groups have appropriate separations as, as needed and also provide the kind of interactions that might be desired in controlled situations, where you might have a mentor who's an older student working with younger, younger groups. Again, the building design will evolve, that's, I see, I see that more as a detail to the mandate that we've been given by the district to this point, because what we'll, what we'll do is provide for as much physical separation as is demanded with doors and things like that, that will keep age groups separated, but will allow for there to be the mixing that is desired on a day-to-day basis in a controlled way. But to answer your question, there is, my understanding, and maybe Roy can clarify, the core leadership group, which includes both wellness, the, the community services groups and the school district, are working on those ideas as we speak, and their work is to be finished within probably two and a half months from today. So at that point, we will have clear direction as to the kind of mixing that is comfortable to both, to all the groups.
Can you speak to the pros and cons of separating the community center and the children and what came up in the meetings and how that has been addressed, first expressed and then addressed?
Well, sure. There are, there are concerns, on the concern side, there are, there are concerns from members of the community and parents about the mixing of age groups in an uncontrolled way, that a younger child might have contact or exposure or hear language that's not appropriate by co-locating. On the positive side, and that's, you know, and that's kind of the extent of it, so there will be those who probably will never feel comfortable with the co-location idea in the community. We understand that. But in all of our work with the community, in the, we've now had eight community workshops, and we've used a process, and for those of you who've been a part of, or part of this, you know, involvement, we have a way of understanding what the general consensus is of the, of the members of the, of the audience that's there. And we've always received, we've not, I should put it this way, we've never received what I would call a level of consensus that not co-locating is a good idea on the site. And so we've been using that democratic process as, as a way to, and more or less, drive what the community is telling us to do in a way that listens to all voices, and when there's an outlying voice, that's recorded and for all to, to see and to frankly to vote on. And so if a question comes up about age group and safety, and those kind of questions do come up, the, the answers are strongly that the design team needs to solve that problem, if it's a specific mixing problem, or, and that'll be our burden to come back and do that. But it's also been clear to us that the direction we've been going is heading in the right direction in terms of what we've set up as a framework for providing adequate separation of the age groups by providing loading of the facilities on opposite sides of the site and mixing in a very controlled way when it's desired.
So kind of on that same note, the community commons area seems like a really wonderful space. How did the boundary line, looking at page four, how did the boundary line become so that the, the community commons is the public space during the day?
Right.
It seems like this would be just a wonderful space for the kids to have-
Sure.
-total access to and be a protected space. And it would seem to me that that would provide more value to the kids than it would to the public.
Sure. I agree with you, and I think the, the approach is that we're not trying to exclude anyone necessarily, that there could be, there could be school-aged children that are occupying the space that are not part of the district, that might be visitors to the site, that students who are part of the district, are part of this, part of the school system itself. Our view is that that mixing or that use of the space can be provided, but it can't be provided in absence of some kind of supervision or control. And so if a teacher or an instructor or even an administrator or some function, I use the term lifeguard because it's interesting, we're so, we, we're so accepting of the need for someone to sit in a chair at the edge of a pool and watch someone in the pool, right? And it's not, and there's, and there's old kids and little kids in the same pool, right? And they get along usually, but there's someone there watching over those activities. And we see, we see there's a burden to provide that kind of supervision and that kind of guidance and that kind of oversight in a space like this for it to be, to really be a rich space where people, generations can mix. And so we would very much encourage that, not create the boundary here, but what we've drawn by that red line is to say that the school could operate and be fully functional if there were a community, a community program going on here that really, let's say it was a festival or an art program or something like that, you really wanted to just let that be a community operation, the building design would allow that to happen.
Could I offer one small kind of additional observation on that? It's also partly about controlling adults in the school. So we have to, we have to think about the boundary in both directions. It's, it's partly about children and adults mixing in a space like that, but it's also about having the school administration know and be familiar with and, and understand exactly who the adults are that are in the context of the school. So if that, if that boundary is too permeable, we have the issue of, of adults wandering the school and administrators not knowing who they are and what they're doing there.
I also have a kind of question along the same lines. So I'm curious about the, the site to me seems lean on nine through 12 outdoor space. It seems like it's kind of limited to just the student terrace and the nine through 12 social space. So I was kind of curious on how, you know, how that kind of outdoor need was calculated or planned for and whether, I kind of asked this question now because it seems to me like the, the community commons might be an opportunity for more, for additional nine through 12 outdoor space.
Right, that's a fair observation. We would, we would certainly welcome additional outdoor program space for that age group. I think as you identified, we envision this student terrace to primarily be upper-level students during the school day, as well as, there's a social yard, if you will, a senior lawn in this location at grade level. So those two, the combination of that upper terrace and the lower yard are the, are the, we call dedicated spaces, where we feel like that really is more owned by the older students, the, the high school students. And of course, the athletic fields, while not necessarily restricted to only the upper-level students, will be their primary domain as well. Having said that, I actually agree with you that if, if, if there's comfort level in bringing high school students to the commons, that that, and that can be done in a controlled way, that community field is a positive experience for all members of the community, then I think that would be a wonderful experience. I, I'm hesitant to sort of start creating like, you know, physical sub-separations of the, of the commons, you know, to say, you know, the high school students, you have to stay in this pen. I would much prefer there to be sort of a, you know, an operational understanding about how behavior is expected, you know, in a space like this when you're mixing with community and other members of other age groups. But I think that if we could extend that, that age group into that common, into the common space, I think that's only enhancing the overall experience of the center. And as we, as we move forward, if we can, if you're suggesting that we need to find even more space for, for the high school students, then I'll take, we'll take that as guidance and do what we can. One thing we have, just if, if you're thinking about, have we thought about rooftop uses? We have, and I think they come at some operational costs in terms of construction costs and things like that. It doesn't mean we can't do that, and I'm not sure we want to have kids up on the roof. We've talked about whether, you know, the displaced hard courts could go up to, you know, a future Phase Two roof or something like that, and that could be looked at. know, a future Phase Two roof or something like that, and that could be looked at. But I think what we'll, what we'll do as a first course of action is see if there's any way to sort of, you know, find some way to make either the space that we provided more generous, or feel more like it's, you know, a space that's dedicated for them.
The sports field area has gotten smaller from the existing secondary school, and it looks like, just taking a quick look on the aerial, it looks like they now have a 90-foot diamond hardball baseball field, and this looks like it's a softball field. Are they gonna, can you, do you know any-
Yeah.
Can you explain the dimensions of the playing field a little bit?
Sure. This is actually representing a hardball field at this point. So I think the-
Doesn't have a 90-foot diamond, though.
I'm looking at my partner out here. Is that? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is, I believe the, the line you're seeing out here is, I think, a 275-foot demarcation from home base. My understanding is this represents a full, the softball field is actually a bit smaller.
The idea is that-
You have to speak at the microphone.
This is Graham Hill with Nexus Partners.
Hi, good evening. To respond, the diagram does show a softball arrangement for the bases, but since the field is intended to be synthetic, those bases can actually be moved and placed, so there will be infrastructure within the turf system to accommodate a full hardball field, too.
So how do you skin the infield? Never mind. Okay, are there any other questions for the architects?
I actually have a few more questions. So I have a question kind of about the flexibility of the classroom space. About probably six years ago, I was, had a conversation with Tony Smith, who was then the superintendent of the school district, when this project was kind of, you know, much more in its infancy.
Sure.
And it was kind of, it was kind of portrayed to me that, that one of the reasons for consolidating all of the, at least all of the school facilities onto one site was to allow a lot of flexibility as the demographics of this small school district changed unpredictably, you know, I mean, you know, we can kind of project things out, but you know, as they kind of changed in the future to allow, you know, classrooms to be shifted from K through eight to nine through 12, or, you know, wherever kind of the grade level needs fell.
Yes.
And so just in looking at this, I'm, I'm curious, you know, since the K through eight is in a distinct building from the nine through 12, if that is still kind of a goal of the, of this project, and how that's kind of addressed.
Sure. It's a good observation, and the idea is, carries forward from that initial vision, right, to create the most flexible, you know, possible arrangement. Let me just talk a little bit about the reason for phasing, Phase Two in this location. The, the, and then I'll answer, try to answer your question, this might help you understand. The, one of the objectives for growth to get to Phase Two, which would accommodate 1,180 students, anticipated from the 780, which is the current student population, is to not ask students to go off-site during what will be a construction campaign to build Phase Two. And so finding a strategy for construction on-site for Phase Two that can be safed off and isolated was, was critical, not to have multiple expansion points on campus. So there are, there were earlier studies where we were looking at growing K8 by expanding its own footprint, so effectively creating another expansion point here, as well as another expansion point here. We realized that the issues around that might involve moving kids off-site, which is something the district did not want to do. So what we are looking at is how to grow K8 in this facility, and we do expect that there will be migration of classes and classrooms from one use to another. And it's still to be determined whether or not the classes, classrooms in fact are bounded by physical walls, they may have more flexible walls between them. Again, to be determined in this next round of work. But we would expect that the growth would occur in K8, and that one strategy is that that growth happens inside that building, we provide enough growth for it in Phase One, that we just simply can grow by four classrooms to hit that need. Or we can look at another strategy that moves high school to really occupy this portion of Phase Two, and 68 could potentially occupy some portion of what now is the STEM Center. They will spend some of their day, because the four, sorry, the five through, sorry, the six through eight classes are cord, which means that they will spend a portion of their day in this building, and a portion of their day in the STEAM Center, in the enrichment programs, and the science programs, and things like that. So they're already over there. And so we're going through some strategies now to understand what the best way to grow to Phase Two is, and there's many, there's sort of multiple pathways to do that. But flexibility is obviously key, because whatever we build now, we know won't necessarily be what's in place, you know, 10, 15 years from now. So the more flexible, the better, we understand.
I'd also like to jump back to some previous questions, because I think it ties in here really well. There are a lot of construction and facility flexibility ideas embedded in everything that we're talking about. But that's not why the district is suggesting, and continuing to pursue over all these years, this whole idea of K-12 co-location for the district, for our superintendent and our board. It's always been about outcomes for the kids. And I'm not the educator here, I'm the facilities guy. But I feel like I need for the planning commission to know and understand that our district is convinced that K-12 co-location is the best way to get good, great, maybe even superb academic performance throughout all grade levels. So I just need you to know that the district's motive here is about educational outcomes, and we are trying to make facilities that help with those educational outcomes.
I have another question, kind of a general site layout question. It seems like the community facilities, to me, are a bit disjointed. You have the kind of the pool, and, you know, in Phase Two, the gym will be a community facility, kind of over in one corner, and then the rest of the community facilities cluster, you know, located in a cluster along San Pablo. So I'm curious why, if it was explored to locate the, to kind of cluster the, the other community facilities near the existing gym and pool? I'm just kind of anticipating, you know, it seems to me, if, you know, if you have a senior who comes to, you know, use the senior lounge, and then wants to swim, and, you know, to direct them there is, you know, go out to San Pablo, make a ride on 47th, go all the way to the back of the site, it's, it's a little, you know, there's no internal circulation through the site for a community member while school's in session necessarily.
Well, I think that was something that was considered, and I think as Roy mentioned, what we're trying to do is look at this, there's always a gives and takes, and I think the feeling was in the design team, and what was, what was the working starting point for our work, was that the gym facility, obviously leaving the existing gym there is a given, and that expand, you know, when we have to expand that program, we are expanding recreation in that location. But as you can see, it makes sense to adjoin the school gym with the existing gym as a starting point, because you've got shared facilities and lockers and things like that that you really want to take, and, you know, take advantage of. The other part of it is that there's so much, we sort of felt that the, despite what you just pointed out, that the benefits of bringing the members of community and letting them participate in the experience of the community commons really feels to us like more of the living room of the community, and that there's, that library is a huge part of that, that access to cafe and all. I just don't know with the, on balance, I think it just, it seemed to make sense to have access to most of the community services and, you know, along the San Pablo frontage, and let the recreation piece of it stand by itself. But if, it's a fair observation.
Okay. I have two more questions. So I'm curious how the, the library facility will work? If so, if I'm understanding correctly, the community will not have access to the school, you know, the community library will be open during the day, but the community will not have access to the school library, at least during the day? I wasn't clear whether that, you know, when school was not in session, whether that would change, or, and at least whether children would have access to the collection of the school library, you know, kind of through the community library, if they weren't, you know, if they weren't students at the school.
The program for the library is being, is being developed, and I think there's even a question at this point as to whether the library is, for the school at least, completely centralized, or whether there's portions of the library that live within the K8 and the high school itself. So that question is going to be addressed by staff in the next two months. If, assuming though that it does stay at grade level, where we've indicated, that we would envision that the public would access the library, as we said, from, more or less from the portal position into what would be, let's say, a welcome center, think of a flexible room that has information, computer kiosks for community access, let's say, meeting space for group study or community use that is assignable. And then you step into the next level of security, where you might actually be inside of what we call the circulation area, where collections are held, and so you'd be inside, whether it's the RFID or magnetic, you know, control point. That would be where collections would be for community, and then beyond that, collections for age groups for school. The specific levels of access beyond that are something that I think were to be developed in plan, and again, they can be controlled with doorway systems, transparent glazing, things like that, that can allow flexibility during hours of the day, when, let's say, even during school, the various age groups are not using that particular space. So it becomes a little bit of an operational challenge, but also a mandate to figure out, to help us understand how to best provide as much access as possible, and as much flexibility as possible to all members of the community, but then to control it when we do need to control it for school use only.
So they will be connected?
That's the, that's how we envision it. They're connected, but it's-
Separate.
It's separate, and there's layers of sort of, you know, security, if you will, at various points as you move into the space. And again, the library isn't all access from one spot. Public access is from one side, we would envision school access from another side.
I just have one more question. I'm curious what the, the learning gardens that are shown on the plan, maybe it might be a better question for, I don't know if you can answer it, if it's a better question for school district officials, but-
No, no, that's-
I'm just kind of curious how that will, kind of what those look like, and how they will be kind of integrated into the curriculum.
Right. Well, and this is really driven by the science teacher at Annie Yates, who is very, very passionate about young learners and their access to educational gardens. And what they've got at Annie Yates now is sort of the model, if you will, that we want to bring over to this site, and they have a combination of garden that the kids actually work and get involved in, as well as some various planters, where they plant, plants and see what happens, and do experiments, things like that. What we're envisioning is the opportunity to do that, but also to allow the landscape to become a teaching tool for not only students, but for community, to understand issues around, whether it be rainwater collection, whether, you know, green building solutions, whether it's about low-water plants, that kind of thing. So really, whether the garden is something that occupies a horizontal landscape, whether it's a raised bed, will be determined. It may be something that's forming some sort of a wall edge, a green wall, that forms some softening device to some of the building forms that is plantable. And, but the goal is, I think, to allow the educational experience not to only happen in the classroom, that the landscape and the site, and the way we bring adults and age groups together is also a learning opportunity, and that's, I think, a core vision of what the center was, was trying to hit.
Could you explain what the sound studio is?
Sure. The program for the sound studio is, it's really a place where, well, there's several components to it. There's a, there's a music studio, and the music studio has the ability to support choral and instrumental groups. And the sound studio part of it is a place where digital music can be prepared, so it's a little bit of like headphones on and working with digital equipment to mix sound, and to lay tracks down and things like that. And we'll get some specific input from staff, exactly how they'd like that to be configured. There may also be practice rooms, one or two, that allow students who are playing instruments to close the door and work on their instruments without necessarily disrupting other activities. And we want to be able to allow ensemble practice as well. So there's a lot of things that are going on, and again, that space will be as flexible as possible. The equipment side of the sound studio part of it would have, to some extent, some delicate equipment that would probably be required to be housed in a, in a probably a room that can be secured to some extent. That's what we're thinking at this point.
Okay.
I don't have too many comments on programatics and the like. I suppose the professionals I see out there talk about it to no end, and I see there's six more workshops gonna happen in the next couple of months, which I'm sure you'll try to get as many community people out there to comment. I see the parking as a really big issue, and I suppose the mitigated negative declaration will flush out the issues of not just the amount of spaces, but traffic flow and whatnot. But I definitely see the parking is just not at all enough ample for a facility of this size. So I guess my question is, and it sort of leads to the letter we received about keeping the school, the Annie Yates School, and why that wouldn't be, and was it discussed that that would be phased out? And it's sort of the elephant question that I'm gonna throw out to you. Why wouldn't that? It creates more space on the site to maybe add to the nine through 12 open space, a little bit more community space, and then takes advantage of a facility that is already in place and is in good shape. Could you respond to that? I guess not, as, as a, as the professional-
Right. Well, again, as a professional, as Roy pointed out, we are, we are charged with taking a program and a vision forward, which is what we've been working on to this point, which co-locates the K8 and high school age groups. And as Roy had mentioned earlier, it is absolutely critical element of what the district feels- And as Roy had mentioned earlier, it is absolutely critical element of what the district feels will be responsible for the student achievement gains and student outcomes that we're looking for in the future. To some extent, the status quo is not what I think the district is seeking to maintain. There are challenges with this site, and the letter is raising, I think, one of the perspectives that I think is, is out there. We feel that the, there's much work to do, and I think that the onus is on the design team, again, to take a conceptual design here and actually make it work. But there's, there's no lack of confidence that we have that we can actually make it work. The parking question, to be quite honest, you know, it, there is, if you look at what is provided on, if you look at Annie Yates now, there's no parking provided onsite whatsoever at Annie Yates, and that was not an issue. We're providing twice the onsite parking on this project than is offered by the two existing sites together today. Point one. Point two is that if you look at the Fair and Peers report, and I totally understand that the, that using off-street parking is not an as a right, so understood and a variance would be required. Having said that, though, from the report and from what we understand, there are adequate parking spaces in the immediate vicinity to support the parking, the peak parking demand of the project. In addition to that, within a quarter mile of the site, which is easy walking distance for most people, there are 600 parking spaces, of which the report states that 40 to 60% of them are vacant during school hours. So that would say that there's a reservoir of at least, and, and that includes, by the way, the fact that, that the ESS program is actually in place and operating. So some of those spaces actually are being occupied by staff when that survey was done, or visitors. And so there are at least 200 to 300 available spaces within a quarter mile that are available. So I think on balance, that if we are trying to achieve the vision of Tony Smith and to take the charge that has been given, given to the design team, Nexus Partners, to co-locate K 12 on one site and, and really take the district's vision of, of having student achievement be the driver for this work forward, it just, we felt that taking space off, away from program to provide parking onsite was, was detrimental to the overall goals of the project to some extent.
Excellent answers. Go ahead.
Add one more element to the, to the thinking about co-locating K 12 or maintaining the Annie Yates site. I think, again, speaking for the district in terms of its mission, which is the education of the kids, rather than how we provide facilities for that. One of the advantages, and I was here when Tony Smith was around too, and, but, but what I know about the continuity of the district, even on and beyond Tony Smith, in terms of both current and former superintendents and current and former board members. Thinking about one site versus two sites in such a small school district raises equity kinds of issues. If you're going to build a really wonderful set of new facilities with public library availability and before and after-school resources and access to community services and community programs and, and all of Melinda's wonderful programs, why would you want to keep the smaller children in the community isolated from that? And, on the other hand, why would you want to create two sets of that when you can bring it together and get all of the advantages of having a very equitable set of programs and services for the whole community in one concentrated way?
So, yeah, I don't pretend to understand K through 12 and how it would all work. I didn't go to schools like that. But I am a facilities guy, and so that, that was why, what Janam, very good answer on the parking, though, in terms of parking in the community. I, I live a couple hundred yards away, so. Just real quick on issues that came up with DCC.
Is it questions or is it discussions?
These are questions.
Okay.
I mean, the Temiskel Creek landscape, you talked about 53rd Street, and you showed a very nice picture from our design guidelines. Is that the plan to go that way, or did you just kind of show that, like?
Sure. The
I mean, all the way through from San Pablo along the 30-foot easement?
The intent of the group, of the team is to, is to take the guidance from the general plan and the design guidelines forward. We do have a couple of questions for staff and perhaps for you even, about whether or not adherence to, I believe it's a 20-foot cross-section between curb and, let's say, the inside boundary of that creek feature. Given that we do need to provide passenger drop-off to the, to a sidewalk, I think the profile suggested in the general plan and the diagram indicates a curb, a green space, a sidewalk, and then the creek feature, which would mean that passengers would be exiting their car into a, into a planted bed. So we would imagine that we would try to emulate the intent of the, the general plan and design guidelines, but perhaps also accommodate the need for the passenger drop-off as well. So maybe in a 15-foot section or whatever. The more we can, the more we take away from the, if we take another five feet, it may either come out of, you know, an already reduced, as you pointed out, athletic complex. Or potentially, we could even look at narrowing what seems to be an overly sized roadway by moving into the roadway five feet, sliding everything over a bit. That, I think, was obviously something that requires engineering input and further work. So it's speculation at this point. But the intent is to, is to implement the faux creek. I think the, how the faux creek actually transitions from the 53rd Street edge and whether or not it finds its way through what now is the current easement between the, the community service, or the community multi-use space out to San Pablo is a question I think we'll have to get into when we look at the refined landscape a bit more.
Thank you.
Chair Donaldson?
Yes.
Maybe I could just respond to that. I don't, I haven't really discussed this with the design team here, but I'm not quite sure what's being referred to. I mean, this is the diagram that's in the general plan, which is in your presentation. And then there's, in our citywide design guidelines, there's guidelines for green streets and greenways. The key green streets one, this happens to be both, a greenway and a green street, as well as a bicycle boulevard. But the green streets one is, just shows a sidewalk, it doesn't show a creek, because, you know, they don't all have creeks. And then the greenway, although it's actually not very clearly labeled, this really is intended to mean the part of the greenway that's not on a street. The part that is a, you know, private right-of-way where a railroad track used to be. But in terms of 20 feet or any other specific dimension between the curb and the creek or whatever, I don't think there is such a thing.
I think I was looking at the diagram that your finger is on.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of flexibility here, in my view, anyway. As long as we get something that looks like this and it still can accommodate drop-off, I mean, we can be flexible in how that's laid out.
And we had an image, I think, in one of our earlier presentations, I think we tried to pick it up in this one, to make sure that the creek feature is not behind the fence, if you will, that is part of the public domain.
Right.
Could you speak to sustainability, which hasn't been mentioned?
Yeah, thank you for raising that one. I apologize for not bringing that up. The, the project has, has a self-imposed, but also a community-imposed mandate to make this project as green as it can possibly be. And we are targeting what we would call lead gold equivalent, but we've not been asked by the, by staff to seek certification as such, but to simply make the project as green as it can possibly be within the budget that we have to do this work. And so we will certainly be looking at green landscapes. We will certainly be looking at indoor air quality. We'll be looking at water conservation strategies, whether or not we can afford bioswales and things like that, although that might be the, a great solution for our, for our creek, to, are to be determined. We're also looking at cogeneration onsite. To some extent, the roofs of the buildings, depending on how we configure them, become great locations for photovoltaic panels. And depending on whether or not this is something that the city can actually engage in or not, there are ways to provide those kind of infrastructural improvements without bearing the first costs of them by purchasing, you know, like a pre-purchase agreement with a provider that will provide solar equipment panels. And the district and city would pay the stipulated, you know, hourly or the wattage rates. Many agencies and districts have taken that path, and the benefit of that is that what would otherwise be, wouldn't pencil out in terms of ROI or first cost, which is something that, because of the Measure J funding mechanisms, first costs are actually quite critical on this work. That might be an interesting strategy to think about. With regard to interior mechanical systems, one of the reasons we have relatively narrow footprints on most of these classroom and administrative buildings is that daylight penetration is, is very, very important. It, it enhances the human experience, and it also reduces the dependency on artificial lighting. We are looking at multiple strategies for mechanical systems, the idea being that we want to, we want to take as much as we can out of mechanical systems and put it into other things that matter. And one of the ways to do that is to design a building that's actually quite thoughtful in terms of how it sits on the site, how it uses natural ventilation, and what the actual mechanical systems are inside the building. So we may be looking at a hydronic system, which is a radiant floor system to heat the building. And there are issues with that, there may be first cost issues with that, but that would certainly be a greener, the greenest approach, and then there's some fallbacks in case we can't make that work with our budget numbers. But to answer your question, we're absolutely on it, and we should probably come back to you with a very clear sort of, and we will do this, actually. We, we are mandated to come back with you to sort of give you what effectively the checklist is of the lead equivalent targets that we're trying to hit. So we'll have that for you coming up.
If we can get a little hydrogen generation going next door.
Exactly. We love that.
If there are no more questions for the architect, I know there's some people in the audience, this is not a public hearing, but I know there's some people there that have interest in ECL, and if anybody is wanting to make comments at this point, before the commission discusses things, you're welcome to come up and speak briefly.
Three minutes, correct?
That's brief, yeah.
Yes, right. Just wanted to make it clear.
Okay, well, then, we have a number of specific questions that we've been asked by staff to give direction, so parking. We'll go through those and then general comments afterwards.
Do you want to go through item by item, so starting with parking?
I think that would be the most efficient way to do it right now.
Okay. So my thoughts on, on the parking are, I'm fine with the parking as it's laid out, but I think in overall terms, we've got two things going on. We've got a parking issue, and we've got a transportation issue. And I think we really need to address both of them. And, you know, my, my first thoughts when I see the required number of parking spaces is, my gosh, this is an urban school. Why, why is there a need for such great amount of parking? So I would like to see it some part of a program to really address what we can do as transportation. What are the, what's holding back people from riding their bikes or walking? And some of this are, may already be in the works and being resolved with our Safe Routes to School grants and some of the things that we'll see later on tonight in our, our bike pedestrian plan. But given that there is, seems to be an abundance of parking in the surrounding areas, I think we can, we should also look at creative ways of using empty parking lots, like Level Three's parking lot, which gets very little use. Are there ways that we can put that to work? So I feel like we've got the, the parking covered.
Well, my question on the parking is that I think it's probably needed most by the community services aspect, other than the faculty, of course. And I do think it's an issue that has to be addressed. I don't think they should be counting parking on San Pablo, because there's plenty of other businesses and things going on there that use the parking now, and that, you know, we're squeezing so much on this site that the only place you could add additional parking would be more underground parking. That's my comment.
I guess I have the same feeling that the community aspects will be where most of the parking is coming from, and of course, the seniors who have cars. But I did like the architect's answers in terms of parking around the, the area. And I live in Triangle, and I know we barricade pretty well from San Pablo with, with literal barricades on 50, or that 53rd and 47th, and, and roundabouts and so forth, so. But I agree with John, too. I think, and I think there's a comment in here about adding more bicycle parking while making the facility sort of very concentrated on alternative ways to get to the facility, whether it's more bus stops, more bike parking, zip car, you know, the, there's all sorts of ways around it. So I tend to, I, I tend to think there's not enough parking. 34 just doesn't sound enough. But, but because of how much we're squeezing on here, I don't see where else you're going to put it unless you got rid of the, the hard courts in, that are, that are still shown in Phase One, because we have a gym. What's the use there? Is, doesn't the gym probably has basketball courts in there? And maybe you can get the 54 parking right away? And then that's probably ample. And then you'll see what, what happens when Phase Two comes around and your building above.
I'm inclined to, given the, given the surveying that was done by Fair and Peers about the available parking in the area, I'm inclined to consider the parking on 47th Street, because that's school frontage and pretty much a dead frontage. And if that can be reconfigured to accommodate more parking than is there now, I think that that's a good thing. At the same time, there would be some loss of parking on 53rd Street with all the loading and drop-off. But I think that I would also agree with Buzz that the parking along San Pablo Avenue should not be added into that factor. So I'd like to see further information and further breakouts of what different aspects of the facility are generating the parking figures. I know that there's some of that in the Fair, Fair and Peers report, but I'd like to see also a breakdown between what is the nine through 12, and what's the K through eight, and just to get a better idea of how it's all fitting together.
I completely understand that the on-street parking is not counted towards the parking requirement. But when I look, I mean, just looking at the diagrams that are provided, it looks like a lot of parking to me. And I'm really concerned about what the parking is going to do to the surrounding streets, actually. So the, on 47th Street, the, the, the amount of parking, I, I'd be curious to know how the amount of parking that's proposed compares with the amount of parking that's there now. It seems like the, the parking that's shown really makes that an unpleasant place to definitely bike and probably walk. And so I would just really encourage the design team to evaluate what, what the most appropriate parking configuration is, especially on 47th Street. You know, is, I, I'm not, I don't know, but I'm not sure that 90-degree parking is the most appropriate, maybe angled parking, maybe reverse and angled parking is more appropriate. So I would just really encourage some, some looking into that and analysis of that. On 50, I'm going to kind of make some comments about 53rd. On 50th, I'm going to kind of make some comments about 53rd Street, because they, they kind of tie into parking, but they get into other things, which is that, I'm, I'm really concerned with how the, how that 53rd Street, Green Street will be designed and implemented. We've talked about it a little bit already. But I, I think that any, I think that anything that can be done to separate the sidewalk from the curb should be done. I think that that is kind of a key component, the, the separate, the detached sidewalk, I think, is a key component of the, of the Green Street. And so, you know, I understand that the, the, the kind of rendering that's in the general plan is, is, you know, definitely conceptual. But I, I think we should do kind of everything we can with this project to, to get us, you know, pretty close to that. And, because that, to me, that's one of the most exciting aspects of the general plan, is that, that kind of east-west green corridor that connects Temescal Creek Park and all the, and 53rd and all the way across the city, kind of following the course of, of Temescal Creek. So, those are my concerns regarding the parking.
I also was thinking that, looking at 47th Street in terms of looking at back-end angled parking or whatever else could be done that would make it more congenial to bicycles and pedestrians, as it will be a lot of all that going on in that corridor. It seems to me that in front of the school on San Pablo Avenue, certainly that, that could be considered as parking for the school. I know it is the street parking, but that, to me, that, that makes sense, that it could be thought of as potential extra parking. And I also agree with Sean, that 53rd is an exciting connection, east-west. And I, I really, I hope that that, that that could be a model and a beacon of, of hope and light in connecting this city from east to west. So, I, having, paying good attention to that will be important. And also, really focusing attention on public transportation and bicycles and making facilities indoor safe parking for bicycles for both the community at large, as well as for the kids, so that they can keep their bikes there and, and use them, as well as investigating the, the Emery Bay Transit Stop in front. And really making it part of the project, that this is about getting to this site, walking, biking, taking the bus, as well as parking and making that as an important attraction.
I think, I think what I'm hearing from a lot of us is that a transportation demand strategy is a really key part of this. If you're going to have a parking variance, you're going to have to come up with some concrete ways to really support that. Okay, the height bonus. Thoughts on that?
I'm, I'm fine with the height. I think it's well within the whole San Pablo corridor. I actually think it's pretty low. I think the general plan was pretty low. And I think this is very, you've been very mindful of the neighbors in the community. And the way that the tallest part is recessed from San Pablo and recessed basically from everything, really does the step-down kind of concept that we really tried to push in the general plan. So, I'm, I'm very okay with the, the height. And I definitely think this provides community benefits to support that.
I agree with John on that. I think that it's been well planned, so it stayed back in the residential area, and I have no objection.
Yeah, I agree. The massing is nice with the taller building in the middle, and I, I think there could be some taller elements, too. So, but, that's my personal opinion.
I think that, given that so much of the San Pablo Avenue frontage is about community open space use, that that supports the, supports the height bonus on that.
I don't, I have very few concerns about the height. But as far as the justification for the height bonus, it, it seems to me that we, I would be completely willing to make the determination that, that, I, I could, I had, I struggled to find two, two of the required categories to kind of pin the, the height bonus on. But I, I think you can pin one very strongly, which is, I mean, just the, you know, public open space. I think there's plenty of public open space provided here. And just the, you know, the amount of public facilities, the library, the, the new multipurpose room. So, I, I think that we could easily say that that is substantially beyond normal requirements to use the, the language of the zoning code and hang our hats on that, rather than the, the two that might be required.
I'm completely okay with the height. In fact, again, as, as other commissioners mentioned, the sensitivity to the step-backs and the massing is, is very good. And, you know, staff had said the substantially beyond normal requirements for the, what was it? The, for the bonus would be...
All are, all are part of the bonus can be granted for just one benefit, if it's spectacular enough.
I think this is a good community benefit, so.
Pedestrian experience along San Pablo Avenue, and I think also along 47th Street, since that's been brought up and it's a concern. Actually, along 53rd as well.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely. And as some of the other commissioners have mentioned, this is really a great opportunity to really carry forth the vision that we have for 53rd Street. And so, I'd really, really like to see a lot of focus on that, to really carry forth that vision as much as we possibly can. As far as San Pablo, just your conceptual design, your massing, what you've shown us tonight, really kind of tells me that you've broken up the, the street with entrances and things that will really support a good pedestrian experience. The wide sidewalks, generously sized sidewalks are really important to me as far as a pedestrian is, is feeling comfortable. I guess my, my thing here would be to really follow the design guidelines. The design line, design guidelines really gave some fantastic vision to, to creating the experience that we want. And also, 42nd, 47th Street, as others have mentioned, really needs something, because we've got that, that, the massive amount of parking that we have there. We need to do something to make the pedestrian and the bike experience good.
Well, I think that, again, it's a little early, but I, I think the, particularly on San Pablo, the best thing would be to have a various setbacks, so it's not one flat wall along the street there. And it looks like they've begun to do that. It's my feeling.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be better renderings of all, all this in the next couple of iterations. But, I agree with everybody that 50, 53rd Street, you could just follow the, the boilerplate of the design guidelines and probably come up with something pretty good. And the materials on that community building, the EUSD admin building, is going to be key to get some translucence into the community commons, which the rendering that you showed did kind of make it look like it was blocked in. As much as it's for the community, can't really see it. So, materials and maybe breaking up the building a little bit will help there. And then, good luck on 47th Street. I, I feel like really it should be wayfinding to deter people from biking and walking down there. The experience on both sides of the street really isn't that good. But 53rd Street even today is a great bike experience. That's the way I go to get down to the other side of town. So, again, follow the guidelines and try to find ways to color the concrete, put in more landscape, make it easy for that senior who's got to go from the senior center around to the pool. There's got to be an experience there and a safe experience. But otherwise, I think the concentration should be on the other two frontages.
Excuse me. I'm not actually so worried about the San Pablo Avenue frontage, because there's a generous setback and there's a breaking, the buildings are broken up, so there's views in. And I would assume that there's a desire for transparency to see what these community activities and community services are going to be. So, I'm not that worried about that one. But 47th Street is a real challenge. And I think doing whatever can be done and studying that and making it a better pedestrian and bicycle experience, both in terms of just the experience, you know, comfort-wise and visually, but also safety, because if that's going to be the major entry point for all of the nine through 12 students, there's going to be traffic, there's going to be people coming and going, and it needs to be really carefully looked at. On 53rd Street, there really is going to be a conflict between how you do, how you handle a loading zone and how you make that a Green Street. And you really need to treat that with a lot of care, because there is a real strong interest and desire to have that be a special place. And a loading zone is a hard thing to make a special place, so.
Yeah, I've kind of already given my comments on 47th and 53rd. And I'll just add that, I mean, I'm sure you intend to do this anyway, but the, just that the San Pablo frontage of those buildings, just that that be treated as the front. I mean, those buildings really, you know, they really have four sides. And though, even though they're not going to be accessed from San Pablo, I think that that, you know, that's kind of almost the most critical elevation. So, I would just really encourage you to kind of treat that as, as the front of the building for aesthetic purposes. And I'll just add, just to kind of clarify my comments on 47th Street, I'll just add that the, you know, I, I shared that I have concerns about kind of how friendly that street will be to modes of transportation other than cars. And I would just, I would just encourage the design team to really to kind of reevaluate that and design it, design it to address the quality of the parking rather than the quantity. I'm, I'm far less concerned with the, the quantity of the parking than, than the quality of it and how it affects other, other users of that space.
I actually, I agree with the 47th Street and 53rd. I think they will be important and challenging to make pedestrian-friendly. San Pablo is a very important entrance. It is, it is the face of the building. And it has, it's been terrible forever. And this is our big chance to make it inviting for people and, in the community, for people driving by. And certainly for pedestrians, spaces to, even just small spaces to sit or an overhang to stop for a moment and look in. It's really crucial that also San Pablo be representative of Emeryville as a community.
Just add to Sean's comment. I think you said it really well about the parking. I'd rather see quality there than the quantity of parking. I, I think you, that really nailed it for me.
Yeah, how about the amphitheater? Thoughts?
So, my, my thoughts on that are that yes, we should identify the, the programming up front. My other comment on the amphitheater, though, is, is really, I'd really like to see the boundary line shifted for what the, the public space is to what the student space is, or at least consider that. And even if it's for the, the nine through 12, so that they do have more space there. It, it seems like this is just such a wonderful space that, that I'd, I'd like to have the students have more use of it, freer use of it, just easier use of it, than, I think that's more important than having the, the public have access to it during the school day.
I think we should talk about both of those issues together, because they seem to be pretty well linked, so.
Well, I think that the amphitheater probably would be better used by the K, the high school students, at least during the lunch hour. And that, I don't quite see how much use it would get from adults during the weekday time, so that it could be transferred back and forth.
Yeah, I, I guess the commons and the amphitheater will be the more, the probably the most organic part of the program. And to see what the use will be, but I agree with Buzz, it will be where the senior, or rather, the high schoolers that are allowed to go out into the community for hi, for lunch will go down and sit, and they should be able to do that. And conversely, the K through eight classes should be held out there on beautiful days. And you're going to walk over to the, to the, the gardens, what do they, what do they call them? The science gardens, the learning gardens. So, I, I definitely see it as being more organic. But, I think, you know, seniors, library users and admin people working in there, they're going to use that for lunch and sitting outside. It will be a very active space for the community, too. But that could be the beauty of the whole thing, is that there's just a wide range of people out there using it, and it's teeming with excitement. So, not blocking it off from, from the public, just keeping it the way, the way you show it here, just the large openings and it's kind of inviting.
I think, to me, the most important thing is the flexibility of that space. And the amphitheater does need to be equipped with all the necessary things to make it function for whatever kind of events or activities might want to happen there, whether it's for lighting or for sound system or whatever. That needs to be, that needs to be in the plan. If you're going to have the amphitheater, it's got to function. I think it can be designed in such a way that it's flexible, that the kids can be in there, that the public can be in there, and that there can be different kinds of control at different times if necessary.
I, I agree with Chair Donaldson's comments. The, it seems like a no-brainer to me to kind of, at least preliminarily, program the amphitheater at this point, before it gets designed to, to, in too much detail. As far as the use of the commons, it, it's really interesting to me that there seems to be other support for kind of using that for the, for the high school, which was kind of my thought as well. I mean, I, on one hand, I feel a little guilty kind of advocating to take space away from the community, even though it's not, you know, in perpetuity, it's only at certain times. But, just, you know, when I look at the plan, I'm trying to figure out where the ninth through 12th graders are going to eat lunch outside. And it just doesn't seem to me like there, there is enough space for that. And this, the school component of this really kind of lacks a quadrangle. And so, I think that the community commons really is the quad. And, you know, whether that, whether it is part of the school or whether it's part of the, the community uses, is kind of up for debate. But maybe it should be part of the, the school use when, you know, during, when school is in session, or at least, or, you know, at least during the lunch hour or whatever. Because it, yeah, it just, you know, like I said, it doesn't seem to me like there's, there's enough outdoor space for the high schoolers.
Seems, I agree, there, it's a no-brainer for the, the programming of the amphitheater at this point as well. And I'm, I'm all for the community commons, nine through 12, being there with the adults. I think that's what this is all about. And, you know, it's like, we all need to learn how to behave as adults, and this is the perfect forum for that. It's controllable, and I think that's part of what we're trying to do here, so. It's good.
Other comments from, in general? I mean, I'll, I'll launch into just what my, my major concern, which is, my major concern has to do with our existing facility and having a new facility that's this ambitious, that does seem to cram an awful lot of stuff into a very small space. It seems to me to compromise a lot of the outdoor spaces, the playability of the sports fields, the, having to locate the young children's play areas farther away from where, you know, adjacent to basketball courts and farther away from where their classrooms are. And I think there's some real issues with those kind of, those kind of open space and circulation and relationship issues. I'm also really concerned with the funding, you know, the funding situation. funding, you know, the funding situation about what we had set out to build and what the money we thought we had, and what we have now seems to be somewhat smaller, and I think that, to me, what makes sense is doing some kind of phasing that takes advantage of the fact that we do have a functional K-8 school that is, that has been recently been upgraded, and that maybe there should be some phasing studies done that address doing the best high school that we can with the best state-of-the-art facilities and not having, I mean, I'm in the landscape architecture profession, we deal with all kinds of facilities, and the big value engineering word that comes up is just really scary to me on this project, because we want a school that's, that is the best that it can possibly be, and if we're overambitious in phase one and have to start cutting corners because the funding is not available, I would hate to see us in a situation where we can't deliver even what we promised as far as a state-of-the-art science and art facility and facilities for the high school students that we have. So if there is a possibility of at least looking at phasing it in a couple of different creative ways that would allow that kind of flexibility over time, I would really, really like to see that.
Well, I, I agree with you on that. There's too much being put onto the site, and you've done a great job at trying to fit it in, but it, you just can't make all the pieces work. You know, one thought would be, if, I guess it's felt that K-8 has to be with the high school, because it reduces the cost of staffing and operation, and that's the reason they're all on one, one site. However, if that has to be, then I think we should remove the community services and put them maybe over on the Anna Yates site, or at the junior high school site, so we at least have enough land area here that we can do a plan that doesn't have to make as many compromises.
I guess I'm not as concerned that we're trying to fit too much in. I think you've been pretty creative on how you've done it, but I do strongly agree with what, what Gail said about looking at the possibility of phasing and value engineering. Being in the engineering profession, I've seen how that can totally degrade a proj, a project and change it into something totally different, so I think we really need to be sensitive to that and to, to Gail's comments.
Yeah, I, I have to agree, too. I think you put it well, Gail, that the project team and the district, together with the project team and staff, have to look at this cost-cutting idea, and, you know, bringing a good high school is, I think, where this whole idea generated, however long ago, is that we need a new high school, and then this larger facility kind of came into play, and in that interim time, the Anna Yates was upgraded, and, and we started looking at that as a very good asset to the community and a very good facility that has more programs now than it had before. It looks nice, it seems to work in terms of drop-off and everything. Again, I live a few blocks away from there, I don't see any, I love the school, so trying, you know, because of the money loss in funds, looking at a different phasing schema that might phase that in later, because, you know, we, we're unsure of, of the funds and K through twelve, the idea of K through twelve, all working together with all the other programmatic things that are happening on the site, might be a good way to, to go. But I do agree with John and seemingly everybody here, that you've done a great job of squeezing everything on there, and at least of convincing us that it would all work. So, that, those are my comments.
I guess I had a question of the, the architects. In terms of Anna Yates and Gail's phase, the idea of phasing, which I think is, is a good idea to look into, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, when we had our commissioner tour of Anna Yates, there was a build lifetime of the more portable type units, and that, when is that expiring for earthquake upgrade?
Yeah, so at the Anna Yates project was not done with the idea that it would be permanently used on into the future. I mean, as, as Commissioner Moss mentioned earlier, I mean, Tony Smith's idea and the school district's idea back then was that all the facilities would be brought to a single site. So the Anna Yates project was done in a way that put a two-story modular building on the site. It certainly will get us through a period of time. It's sort of fifteen to twenty-year lifespan kind of facility, but it's not the same quality as a permanent set of, of facilities would be.
Okay. So I, I, again, maybe some creative phasing, but I, I do think that it can all work, and I support the whole project being in one location. I am concerned also about value engineering. It's always a bad thing, but we are an urban environment, and this is, this is a, this is the space we have to work with.
My, my comments are going to look really nitpicky, now. You guys have made such general comments. I have some more detailed comments. I would just, I did ask a question about the, the community gardens, and I have a little bit of concern about those. They, they look like they were kind of placed in kind of leftover spaces, and I would just really encourage those to be kind of more thoughtfully developed. I think that can really be an asset for the, for the curriculum. I realize this is a tight site, so we're, you know, there's not going to be the, the room to do something like the Edible Schoolyard Project in Berkeley, but I, I think, and even just kind of including those in the plan, where, you know, that's, that's a really thoughtful thing to include, but I would just, I would just really encourage that they, they be, you know, especially when you, as you're getting into the landscape design, that they be really, really thought out well as to how, how those are going to integrate in with the curriculum, because I think especially in a, in a urban environment, it's really important to, to foster connection with, with food and, and what, what little agriculture that we, we do have, and to kind of encourage urban, urban agriculture to the extent that we can. The, I do have some concerns about the, the turnaround on Fifty-third Street. I'm just, I'm going to express my kind of preliminary skepticism. I am very eager to see how that will be designed more, more fully. I'm, it, it just, it seems a little problematic to me. The, oh, one question I have about the, kind of the site circulation, is that there, there kind of is this, this nice access, pedestrian access through the site, and we're, you know, our next item is, is the bike ped plan, and so I, as I was kind of reviewing these two items, it occurred to me that the bike ped plan shows an extension of the, kind of the new pathway along the Pixar property through the AC Transit property, and it would connect to Forty-seventh right about where that, that access through the site is across on the other side. So I would just, and I know, I realize this, that the, the project has a multi-use path at the far, what is that, western side of it, connecting Forty-seventh and Fifty-third, but I would also just encourage that the, that this pedestrian access through the site be developed kind of so that it is a, it's unclear right now whether it does connect all the way through the site, and I, I think that that really should be developed so that when school is not in session, that that could be a connection, you know, that that could really extend that, that pedestrian connection from Park Avenue all the way to Fifty-third Street, avoiding San Pablo, if, you know, if pedestrians wanted to use that route. The, let's see, oh, just another comment on the landscaping. I'm, I'm sure that as you get into landscape design, that you will be looking at this anyway, but I would just, I just want to say this, because some of the, some of the real rough renderings that we have looked like the, the space that was provided for some of the, the tree planting areas was real narrow, and I just want to make sure that, you know, ample kind of area is, I think the, the trees that are provided and the locations that they're provided in on this plan are really an asset, and will provide nice, nice shade and really make those spaces, and so I just want to make sure that enough space is provided so that they can thrive quickly. And then my last comment is to the design team, is just that if you haven't already, I would really encourage that you take a field trip to Newport Beach and visit the, the Mariners Branch Library there, which is the, the library that I actually grew up going to, and that, that was my elementary school, actually, so I, I grew up using both the, the elementary school library and the, and the public library, which have now been merged into, into one library, and I think it's a really successful example of a joint-use school and community library. I still proudly carry my Newport Beach Public Library card, and I, I visit there when I, when I go down to visit my family. And, yeah, I just think it's, there, I know there were concerns when that, when that library was built over the kind of security issues and the mixing of the community and the, the students, and I know that those, all of those concerns, I believe, were kind of addressed through the design phase into, and to, you know, to the satisfaction of the community, and I think that's a really successful example. I really love that facility.
Anything else?
May I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Just to remind the commission and the applicant and the public that the commission's purview of this, a project, of course, is the design review and the height, use permit, and the parking variance, and any tree removal permits that may be necessary. The comments concerning the program of the facility are very much appreciated, I'm sure, by everybody, but just bear in mind by everybody that the commission has no jurisdiction over that aspect of the project, although your comments certainly, as I say, are appreciated. I'd also just like to note, in case you're not aware of this, that because this is considered primarily a school facility, the building permit for it will be issued by the Department of the State Architect, so it won't be processed by our building division. That's going to pose some interesting challenges with the enforcement of our conditions of approval. I guess we're going to have to build a relationship with the Department of the State Architect to make sure that the building plans, you know, comply with whatever you ultimately end up approving. I also just wanted to comment that, you know, the major thing that you're looking at here is design review, which is a little difficult at this study session, because there really is no design yet, and I, I haven't talked to Roy about this, so hope I'm not out of line, but I'm thinking here that perhaps it might be useful for everybody to have another study session when the design is a little more fully fleshed out before it comes back for a decision hearing. You know, I don't know, if, that's just an option, but if, if you want to do that, we can certainly arrange it.
I think that would be a really good idea.
Okay.
I just want to express my sympathy. I never wished DSA approval on anyone.
Uh-oh. Well, I'm sure the school is familiar with it, because all their facilities have to be approved that way.
Okay, thank you very much. We have one other pub, we have one public hearing. Is there a request for a five-second?
Yes, please.
Five seconds.
We can start. We'll go, no, we're go, okay. Public hearing, pedestrian and bicycle plan. Let's go ahead with that.
Thank you, good job.
We could take a two-minute break, since we seem to be losing commissioners. Why don't we do that? Let's take a two-minute break.
This is a good, good thing to go out on.
We're honored. Okay, the Emeryville pedestrian and bicycle plan.
Good evening, Chair Donaldson and members of the commission. We're pleased to be back tonight to ask for the commission's approval of the new Emeryville pedestrian bicycle plan. At the February study session, you heard a detailed presentation, and so tonight we'll do a kind of a summary overview and then discuss the revisions that were made from, since the last dra, draft. And I'm going to just run through some slides, but I also have Brett Hondorpe with Alta Planning and Design here to help field questions and add anything that I might have missed. And then, of course, we're here afterwards to answer any questions and take your comments. So work started on this plan back in 2010, and at the outset, there was a whole series of outreach efforts, including surveys, tours, special outreach to the schools, to, to focused public workshops, and special outreach to the schools, to, to focused public workshops. And the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee provided guidance and kind of an open forum for discussion of the plan along the way. The draft was completed in November 2011. And since that time, the draft has been through extensive committee review. The BPAC provided review and discussion at their November, December, and January meetings, and then approved it for forwarding on. Both the Public Works and the Transportation Committee reviewed the plan in January. And then we had the two study sessions, the planning commissions on February 23rd and the City Council Study Session on March 10th. So here we are at the approval hearings. And anticipate that it will be at council on May 15th. And you'll recall that there are four major components to the plan. An executive summary, Part One, which is the first three chapters, provide kind of the, the purpose of the vision and some kind of existing conditions and basic information. And then Part Two is really the implementation strategy. And then there is a set of appendices as well. And in Part One, the three chapters are, Chapter One, the introduction. Chapter Two provides the vision goals and policies. And these are largely derived from the general plan, but new policies have been added as well. Chapter Three describes opportunities for improvement and barriers to pedestrian and bicycle travel. And it also summarizes travel patterns and includes the findings from public outreach exercises. And then Chapters Four through Eight are comprised Part Two, which is the implementation strategy. And it includes chapters describing pedestrian and bicycle programs, a chapter on citywide improvements, standards for bicycle boulevards. And then Chapter Seven is the listing of the numerous site-specific projects. And then Chapter Eight are recommendations for funding and implementation. So changes were made as a result of planning commission comments at the February study session. There was support for moving the bicycle boulevard that was shown on 45th Street, moving it over to 47th Street in the Triangle neighborhood. There was some rewording of policy P19 to emphasize San Pablo as a green multimodal corridor. And West Oakland BART was added to policy 4.2, which speaks to connections with transit. And then Bay Street was added to the list of areas needing additional bicycle parking. And City Council had some comments as well that resulted in a couple of changes. There was a discussion about safety on San Pablo Avenue. And the City Council was interested that, that the city worked with Berkeley and Oakland to address safety issues. And so information has been added on that. And a new implementation action to improve coordination among the three cities has been added as well. And also, the council requested that the plan include provisions for bicycle, bicycle maintenance stations. These are freestanding units that provide basic repair tools. And they've been used successfully in other cities. So we've included that. Also, in this last revision, there were some refinements made to the costs. So where the draft you saw before was totaling out at, oh, just over $60 million, this version has it just under $60 million. So saved a few dollars there. And also, the appendices that were wrapped up in your last document have been separated out to be a separate resource document. So as a result of more detailed study of the pedestrian and bicycle systems, refinements are recommended that diverge from what was shown in the general plan. And so amendments are needed to maintain consistency between the bicycle and pedestrian plan and the general plan. And these amendments would result in changes on four of the diagrams in the transportation element, the circulation diagram, the street system, the pedestrian system, and the bicycle system. And I'll walk through what those changes are. This is the circulation map, the general plan. And all the changes are, are included on this plan. And you also, I also want to remind you, in the general plan, being that it's more general, the Class Two and Three were kind of grouped, Class Two and Class Three bike facilities were, were grouped. And whereas on the, in the pedestrian and bicycle plan, they're differentiated. So let's see, starting over here on the west side, the general plan includes a north-south bridge crossing Powell Street here, and, and a Class One path continuing north connecting to Class Two, Three path further north. And the pedestrian and bicycle plan is recommending that these not be included. The feeling being that, that there's been a lot of work and study going into the improvements of the, the Powell Street urban design plan. And plus the idea that there would be at some point a bridge crossing the freeway at 65th Street, that these facilities would be expensive and not necessarily needed once you have better connection to the Bay, Bay Trail here and here. And let's see, up in the northern part of town, we have an existing bike lanes on 65th Street. And it was felt that, that having a bicycle boulevard on 66 wasn't necessary since we have already adequate east-west connection here. And so the bike ped plan does not include a bike boulevard on 66. So with that being removed, that would mean that we'd have this, this multi-use path on the general plan map, cutting through the, the block where Express, Expressions College is, not connecting to a bicycle facility over here. So the recommendation is that that be pedestrian only. And then over here, we have, the general plan shows these bike boulevards on 59th and 55th extending east of Doyle Street. And the recommendation is that they not extend east of Doyle because they don't connect with any other facilities to the east. And also, both streets have offset connections further east where it crosses San Pablo Avenue. Let's see. And we had discussed the change of 47th to a bicycle boulevard. And the general plan shows this segment of 47th and this little leg of Doyle Street to be Class One and Two. And the bike ped plan recommends that, that be deleted. And the reason behind that being that, as you saw the previous study session, there's a lot going on with ECCL in this area. And to have a bike facility going through there as well, we felt would be in conflict. And plus, there's adequate facilities on other surrounding streets. And then a small change would be to extend on 45th Street, extend the bicycle boulevard all the way to San Pablo Avenue. And then the final change would be this Class One path that is recommended from this Doyle 47th corner here, mid-block over to connect to Hollis Street. And we looked at that a little bit further and realized that it would be problematic in terms of getting easements. There are existing buildings there and felt that the, the cost would outweigh the benefits of that. So those are the changes that are recommended in the general plan amendment. And then I'll just go quickly through the other maps so you can see how they play out. So this is a street system map, which includes bike boulevards. So the changes to this map would be the changes that I'd already discussed on, relative to the bike boulevards. The pedestrian system would, these are the relevant pedestrian changes. And then the bike system map has these changes. So that's it for the general plan amendment. This plan, this pedestrian bicycle plan is covered under the EIR for the general plan. And we have found that the amendments will, to the general plan, will not result in any significant new environmental effects. And so as a result, no new environmental review is required. And tonight, we're recommending that the planning commission approve a resolution recommending City Council adopt the plan, accept the appendices, and adopt the general plan amendment. So that concludes the presentation. And we're here for questions.
I only had one question. Was, was the discussion from the BPAC and staff when, on the change from 45th Street to 47th Street on the bicycle boulevard, and how that affects the crossing over, eliminating the Class One and Class Two, the cross, crossing over San Pablo and getting over to, I guess, 45th Street? Were they okay with that? Was there
Well, there was a lot of debate.
Yeah.
At, at the BPAC, but also at the Planning Commission Study Session. And you may recall that we had the chair of the BPAC here. And then, so in, in one regard, having the bike boulevard on 45th is a closer connection to, to, let me see if I can go back and take a look at the map. It's a closer connection to the portion of 45th that's west of San Pablo Avenue. But this is a difficult intersection anyway because it's offset. And so the feeling was that if you have, if, if indeed at some point we do, we are able to make this connection here, then the crossing here would be, would be better than here. And also, that the street itself, 47th Street, is, is a nice wide street. And people felt that it was a better street as a bicycle boulevard than 45th.
In that area, we were just, you know, looking at the ECCL plans with the bike lane coming down the west side of the property. That sort of either loses its purpose or, or, I mean, it's going from 53rd over there. If, if you go down that bike path and go east, you're going through that maze of parking for the school. And if you, but if you go down there and go west and south, then you link up to the other bicycle boulevard somehow. So I'm sort of wondering whether that little orange segment should stay in, or whether it really makes sense to have the, the Class One in the middle of that block there, right?
The L.
Yeah, the L. Because if you come, if you use the Class One from 53rd down to 47th, then what do you do? Or is that just so that you can get around to the high school without going to the, to San Pablo? It seems kind of, it seems kind of.
Yeah. Not having, I mean, if we, I keep losing the mouse here. Even though this wouldn't be designated as a facility, doesn't mean you still can't use it, is the thing. So, and this does provide a, you know, connection to the high school from parts north.
So a question on the general plan update on the recommended pedestrian improvement map seven dash one. We've got the dash line that shows the future improved connection, kind of just showing conceptually a connection between the transit center and the peninsula. So will, will that dash line be shown on the general plan maps also?
It wasn't, it wasn't discussed to put, to make that change with the general plan map.
I'd like it to be. Because, because I think that it's, it's an important connection that should be expressed somehow. And since it, it is in the bike plan, I think it really should be reflected in the general plan, too.
I would just note that the, the rest of the general plan transportation maps, all, pretty much all of them, are pretty site-specific in terms of their different facilities that they show. There is one other proposed conceptual facility in the bike, in, in the general plan transportation plan, which is a path along the Emeryville Crescent from Powell Street out to the Bay Bridge. That is not shown on the map either, but there is a written policy that says the city will study this thing because of not knowing an exact alignment and, you know, other issues with it. So in light of the fact that this line here would be pretty much the only conceptual kind of a line on this map, we might want to consider instead doing the same thing we did for the Crescent path, which is to just put a written policy in the plan that says we'll further explore this corridor. Would they be okay with that? All right. We'll have to come up with some language. Assuming the rest of the commission, or a majority of the commission endorses that.
I, I don't, I kind of want to throw this out there and see how the, how the other commissioners feel. But I, I would kind of encourage the, I would encourage the policy, that policy to be kind of general and that any additional kind of, any additional connections across the freeway to the Bay Trail be, be studied. I, I know for me personally, that is, the biggest obstacle to using the Bay Trail is the Powell, the Powell Street interchange. And I don't use the Bay Trail because, I mean, if I use the Bay Trail, I access it from the, the bike bridge up near university because that, the Powell Street interchange is so terrible. So I think to word it kind of generally, that any, any new connections be explored or studied, then, then we're not fixed to a, to a specific project or, or pathway or anything like that. But it's really getting us to that, to that goal of opening up the, that end of the Bay Trail.
Any other questions, comments, or suggestions?
Maybe just to add on to what Sean, I agree with what Sean's saying about keeping it open in general. But should we also express that we want to somehow connect the transit? One of my concerns is connecting the, the transit center and the high-density area on this side, and especially the transit center with the higher-density office buildings and, and Watergate and the, the Bay Trail on the other side. So how do other people think about adding something in the, in the policy that, that talks about connecting to the transit center?
Chair Donaldson, may I suggest that you ask questions and hold the public hearing and then have your deliberations?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, any other questions for Deborah? All right. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on this? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the discussion is whether we have general language or whether we have, about exploring possible connections across the freeway, or whether we have specific language speaking about, how would you want to phrase it?
Connecting, the intent of what I want to do, I don't know how I'd phrase it, but the intent of what I would want to do is, is provide a better connection, a direct connection between the transit center and the higher-density stuff. And a direct connection from the transit center to the Bay Trail is one thing. And then to the office towers and the Watergate condos is another, and the open space. So maybe a direct connection to the peninsula, if that's from transit center to peninsula in general terms.
Well, it works pedestrian-wise now because there's sidewalks that go there. And we ride our bikes on the sidewalk because that's the only way to get through that junction.
Can I suggest some language?
Sure.
So how about something to the effect of a policy to study, study additional connections across the freeway to the Emeryville Peninsula with an emphasis on connecting the
across the freeway to the Emeryville Peninsula with an emphasis on connecting the most dense or high-intensity uses?
I think that's great.
That sounds all right with me.
Okay, so we're adding a new policy to the general plan to that effect.
To the general plan or to the bike plan?
The general plan.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking about adding it to the bike plan.
No, this is, this is really to convey the future improved connection dash line on the, on the pedestrian improvement map, to convey that in the general plan.
Well, that strengthens the, the great need for the Powell corridor to get going, you know, the next phase, so.
Well, let me ask Michael, is there any problem with adding that to the resolution? Get your advice one more time.
As long as we can come up with language that the majority would agree on, there's not a problem, no.
So, well, let me read, if I may, I'll read to you the existing policy that we have about the Bay Trail or the path in the Crescent that I was suggesting as a kind of a model, and then something I've got here. It says, "The city will study, in collaboration with stakeholders and interested agencies and parties, the feasibility of a pedestrian bicycle trail along the west side of I-80, east of the Emeryville Crescent, to provide access from the Bay Trail to the eastern span of the Bay Bridge." So what you're suggesting is similar, I think. What I have is the city will study, and we could add, "in collaboration with stakeholders and interested agencies and parties," if you think that's appropriate, "additional pedestrian and bicycle connections across the freeway between the Peninsula on the west and high-density areas on the east." Is that good?
That sounds okay with me.
Is that, is there some redundancy with what's already in the general plan? The statement?
Well...
In terms of the Powell Street corridor?
There's no explicit statement about this particular corridor, I don't think.
Okay.
There, yeah, right.
Well, I think we all want to improve that corridor, and as Vanessa said, it might be a further support of moving those plans forward, so I would move approval with that, with that addition to the resolution.
One second.
So that was Chair Donaldson and Commissioner Moss.
Yes.
All right, are you ready to vote, then?
Yes.
All right, here we go. Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Flores?
Aye.
Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
So the pedestrian bicycle plan is approved by the planning commission, and we will forward your recommendation to the City Council.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any Commissioner comments before we close?
I have, I guess I have one comment. So as Mr. Bryant stated, we, the two of us and Diana Kena, we're at the National APA Conference in Los Angeles, and I'll just, I just want to share one thing, this is a little bit more appropriate for the BPAC, and I'm going to share this with, with that committee as well, but I did have, I did go to a session on, and it's funny, I went to it because it, one of our staff members at the City of El Cerrito was on the panel, but it involved state, kind of state highways as main streets, kind of as corridors through, through a city, and so there was a representative from Caltrans on the, on the panel as well. And I asked the question about relinquishment of state highways, because that's been something that the BPAC has been really interested in, and has, that kind of came up in the discussion of the bike ped plan. And out of that discussion, I actually got the contact of a person, the Caltrans representative that was there said that, that Caltrans was at least somewhat interested in that, they, they're interested in it from kind of a jettisoning maintenance requirements on their end perspective. But I was able to get the contact information for someone at Caltrans that actually is, has been directed to study that for San Pablo, so I can pass that along to staff as, as something that, that might be worthy of exploring, just as a way to, as a way to kind of circumvent some of the requirements that Caltrans has that, that hinder certain bike and ped and other improvements along that corridor.
Like signal timing.
And signal timing, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. I would just like to say thank you, Michael, and good luck in your next step in your career here.
Thank you very much. It really has been a pleasure to serve with you.
Do we get, is Mr. Biddle going to be joining us?
That's right, so at your next meeting, Mike will, will be sitting in this chair, and he'll be, he'll be serving as legal counsel to the Commission, yes?
Okay, well, with that, adjourned. Thank you.
Are we going to?